Welcome to everybody I've called immediately to order. Ask that you stand for the opening prayer, say what you need to say in prayer and remain standing for the flag, believe.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the many blessings you bestowed upon us in the county. We ask that you be with everybody here and help the county to continue to do your will. Amen.
Amen. The allegiance of the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and all.
Please proceed. Do we have anybody? Has anybody signed up?
No, sir.
So, nobody's interested in county government anymore?
I wouldn't say that.
Well, if you're interested enough to be here, you'll be interested enough to want to be heard also.
I know, but sometimes it's not very convenient.
Oh, well.
Not inviting.
If it's not important enough, I will whistle, I guess.
Sometimes.
You're always inviting students.
Yes. Item six on the agenda proclamation declaring October as domestic violence awareness month presented by Jane Mortley outreach specialist. You want to enlighten us about this? Please, ma'am.
Yeah, I'll do the proclamation.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security and humanity, did you submit systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly? Whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial, societal barriers and are supported by societal indifferences. And whereas, the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in this community, throughout the United States and the world. And whereas, women are not only targets, young children and the elderly also are victims, and sadly, emotional scars are often permanent, and domestic violence costs the United States companies at least 3.5 billion in lost work time, increased healthcare costs, higher turnover and lower productivity. And whereas, it is battered women themselves who have been in the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim the month of October as domestic violence awareness month and call citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities and businesses to encourage their participation in our effort to prevent domestic violence. They are by strengthening the communities in which we live in. One in three women are affected by domestic violence. That's one, one out of three women of our mothers, our sisters, our friends, our coworkers, and we thank you for joining the support and supporting the survivors of domestic violence.
Thank you for bringing this to us. If one in three women are affected, probably the same number of men are. And I understand that you're presenting women affected, but men are affected also.
Absolutely.
That is part of the whole thing. Women and men both have to be aware of their obligations and...
Yes, that's what commissioners do.
Where not always, but perhaps will become more so with this type of recognition.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Ma'am, I have a question. Is, has, with the recent trend and the, y'all feel that there's trends, has y'all, has Karnes County, or have you noticed a bigger, I guess, increase in domestic violence from the activities that have ceased or slowed down some?
Yes, there was even an increase. There's just, I mean, there's a larger population in the communities now, which brings more people, more survivors to the situation.
How do you measure the increase? What would I go and look at so that I could tell there was an increase?
We have statistics. I mean, for each person, a woman or child that comes in, we keep account and our percentages have just increased.
Do you keep account of the men that come in also?
We do not personally serve men in the shelter. We do have an outreach program that can support them, but we don't get very many calls from those guys.
What do you attribute that to? That they don't get mistreated, or just that they're scared to say they do?
Men and women are absolutely abused. There, it's just more embarrassing for them to come for. I mean, a lot of times they're not, people don't believe them, or they're just thrown to the side because they think all men should be able to care of themselves. So it's just a situation that's embarrassing for the gentlemen.
Embarrassing for everybody involved, is it not?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for bringing this to us. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Outside the proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, if you can get a copy of that to our clerk, we'll have it filed with the court.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It is not filed with the court, is it not? It's officially...
Yeah, well...
Needs to be filed with the clerk, I believe, not the court.
Well, the clerk.
Yeah.
For the clerk.
All right, item, item seven proclamation and recognition of 2015 National 4-H Week, October 4th through the 10th, presented by Megan Dennison and Jared DeHollway.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jared is with, with some 4-Hers at the state fair right now, so he wasn't able to be here. And actually, one of those 4-Hers is our council president, who we had hoped would be here for recognition of 4-H Week, but he is exhibiting his projects. All right, so for the proclamation, whereas the Karnes County Commissioners Court is proud to honor the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service for 108 years of providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Low Star State. And whereas the admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive and contributing members of our society. And whereas its more than 607,000 urban, suburban and rural youth participants, ranging in age from eight to 19, hail from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of its more than 29,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energies and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout the proud history, throughout its proud history, excuse me, the 4-H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans and through its innovative and inspiring programs continues to build character and to instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now, therefore be it, resolve that the Karnes County Commissioners Court hereby designates October 4th through the 10th, 2015, as National 4-H Week in Texas and commend the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made the program a success. And if you would, I'll pass this around. We have a spot for all of the commissioners to sign, as well as the judge.
All right.
Thank you.
What events are y'all participating in at the state fair?
I believe we've got goats and lambs there right now.
Okay.
Megan also had to file with the county clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, please.
Item 8 on the agenda, discuss approved presentation of one-day 4-H project involving support from Commissioners Court presented by Megan Dennison and Jared DeHollway. Megan, you gonna do this also?
Yes, sir, I am. All right, so...
Tell Jared he owes you when it gets done.
I'll be very sure to do that. Just kidding. So in honor of National 4-H Week, the last day of National 4-H Week, which is Saturday, August, excuse me, October 10th, we recognize that as one-day 4-H in the state of Texas. And one-day 4-H is an initiative to encourage all 4-Hers in the state to do some type of community service project on that day so that everybody's collectively working somewhat at the same time to give some service back. So this year, in honor of the 100th anniversary of the Texas Forest Service, the Texas Forest Service partnered with Texas 4-H and has given one bur oak tree to each county to be planted somewhere in the county. And we would like to know where Commissioners Court would like that planted. And then we hope to have a small ceremony honoring this, this project. We will plant the tree, have a little bit of an educational message to go along with it, have some of our 4-Hers there. We would like to invite any and everyone from the community, especially our leaders. So I guess what I need today is I would like to know if there's a specific location that Commissioners Court would like this tree planted. You know, we recognize that it may be somewhere here on the square, there may be somewhere else. It's, it's your prerogative, your discretion. So, a bur oak tree was identified by the Texas Forest Service as a tree that would be able to fruitfully live in all counties across the state so that we were all planting the same exact tree. So, we have the tree, potentially 25 seedlings that we probably will do some other projects with, a plaque to go with the tree, and then of course, we will maintain watering it and taking care of it. So.
As far as I know, we have not discussed this, and I would not be prepared to look out the window here and say that's where we're gonna plant the tree.
Absolutely. Of course, all this documentation, all the literature that I brought suggests that we would do it on October 10th. I realize that that may not be a suitable date for everyone, and so that's of course our goal, but we're very flexible and whatever you all feel is best is what we will do.
I'm not sure. When, what is our first meeting in October?
Several days after that.
After, yeah.
It's on the 13th. I'd kind of, would like to see it, my personal feeling to be here on the square, maybe between the courthouse and, and this annex, somewhere in that area.
Okay.
I don't know if it's meant, if it would, maybe we have to clear it with the historical department, I don't know. But I would like to have it somewhere on this square to kind of commemorate with the, with the courthouse restoration.
Okay.
We, we will look into it and put it on the next agenda for the next meeting we have.
That's perfect.
If we can move it along.
Sounds great. We will be here. Thank you very much.
Okay. Item 11 on the agenda, discuss approved, disapproved, resolution to support the efforts of Galveston County Commissioners Court to defend the authority of county commissioners' courts in basic matters within each county and the principles of deprocess applicable to district court review of county commissioner decisions. That's presented by Shelby. Shelby, I think you've got the best probably knowledge of what this is about, if you don't know.
Okay. Galveston County Commissioners Court had a court administrator that the court had created and was funding. And in Galveston County, there are several courts, but this court administrator was there approximately for 30 years. For some reason, the county judge and the court decided they wanted to do away with that office, and they did. And there's a district judge in Galveston County, he's trying to invoke Article 5, Section 8 of the Texas Constitution by claiming the judiciary has supervisory control of the Commissioners Court. And in this interpretation, judiciary would have control over everything from county salaries to administrative decisions, and this would minimize the effectiveness of the Commissioners Court. When I was at the legislative conference, they were talking about this. This was a big issue. Fox and 40 counties have, have passed this resolution. What is it, they're trying to send a message that the district judges do not have control over county courts by statutory, wherever the district judges can control with the court, that's one thing. But this judge is trying to take over the whole county court of Galveston County. He's trying to set, say what he can, you know, he can set everything from salaries of the elected officials to whatever. So, Galveston County has taken this to court, is, now is going to the appeals court, and they're trying to get other counties just for support of a resolution saying that county, county government controls county government, not the district judge. Basically what they're saying. The court has, and Galveston has attempted to hire three or four people to replace that position or, and do it, but the judge, he's signed an order not letting him do it because he wants to pick who he wants to pick and create the departments, what he at the county would have to fund. So, it's, it's getting to be a, I guess, a little kicking contest by whose, whose two roosters bumping shoulders or something, but it's getting to be a pretty big, big thing right now.
Shelby, this is, one district judge who wants to control one county?
Yes. And they're scared that if it starts in that county, it may spread to other counties.
Historically, the counties are typically careful of the county.
Yes. And, and all they're doing is they're asking, there's a resolution attached and there's, I've got the copy of the court proceedings as well, of the, the brief that was filed. But all they're asking is that the counties support their decision and satisfy it all.
Herb, I know this is probably on the tip of your tongue, but what is Article 5, Section 8 of the Texas Constitution? Do you have any idea?
I have no idea. I'll look it up, you can answer.
Okay. Well, I was just curious what kind of a toehold he was trying to come about by. Okay, I understand. I didn't, I didn't think you probably had it right there, but I thought I'd ask.
I should have looked it up for our...
That's okay. I, I'm in agreement with Shelby. Shelby, I think that it's a benign enough issue to go ahead and support this just on the principle that if you don't say something now, it may be too late to say something later, so.
The district judge thinks he's kind of got, he's got the ability to do it, so. I said, the district judge thinks he has the ability to do it. And it's more than just a, it's a fight, and it's a good fight, and if the appellate court can make the decision.
It's already moved into the appellate system, hasn't it?
Thank you, dad. Thank you, dad.
This has been going on since, the hearing has been going on, the temporary restraining order was signed on June 9th, 2015, but this has been going on for about a year.
Had only 40 counties inside?
They're just now making it known to other counties.
I think everyone will sign.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. I, I know that we, we support Galveston County and ask that the court passes resolution, ask the court, ask the judge long to sign the resolution, have it filed with the county clerk and also have a copy of this filed in Galveston County.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion?
Do you have a problem with the judge? Is it okay with you? You're the one that's gotta put the signature on it.
I'm not happy I don't know anything about you. That's why I'm not happy, and this is the first time I've seen you saying that.
Well, Judge, if you would like, I could, I would draw that motion, give you at the next meeting to, time to review it by then, is that be fair to you?
That would suit me better.
Herb would, Herb will have all that information, but...
Okay, if we can pass that to the next monthly meeting, I, I'll be happy with that.
So would I.
That's...
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see, we are to item 10 on the agenda, discuss approved presentation of the interlocal cooperation agreement for Wilson County Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program, which they like to call JJAEP program. Authors, Neva Smith.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. And this is the agreement that we do every year. It, it is for our juvenile justice alternative education program, which we have moved to Wilson County. It includes all the school districts that participate in our JJ, our juvenile board and both of our county commissioners' courts. My agreement calls for the county judge to sign with the permission of the commissioners' court.
Anything different from that, sir?
Yes, sir.
Why does, does DeWitt County come in this thing?
They, they were brand new.
I saw that when I was reading this last night, and, and I was surprised.
Yes, and they're gonna transport their kids to the DAEP, which if they get expelled from the DAPs, then they can come into the JJAPs.
And all the county school districts are part of this?
Yes, sir.
And, okay, did I understand that in addition to Wilson and Karnes, this will include DeWitt?
We also have East Central, which is Abert County School.
School district.
And Nixon Smiling.
Okay. Is, is this funded by part of the resources that the county contributes to the program?
Yes, sir, it is, yes. It, it includes, we have a JJAEP grant from TJJD. I have community monies from the state, the school district, and then the school districts contribute as well.
So, do you get removals from DAEPs or JJAPs?
Yes, sir, and our courts also order, like, children that we have in lieu of detention or things that they do as another consequence, we order them into our JJAP. And so then they attend school there, which makes it easier for us to supervise them.
Where do they attend to?
In Florisville, sir. At the, it's, our JJ is attached to the DAP and our probation officer is also out there. It's behind the jail and it's on Alternative Lane.
Who runs the school?
This actual, the JJ program, the juvenile probation department does. Kathy Duvie is our administrator over the JJ. The school program...
What kind of school presence do y'all have?
Kathy has a certification, a teaching certification. The JJ's were developed, gosh, probably 10 years ago, for legislature developed a mandatory JJAP for 125 counties and more. And we have a discretionary program. We started with grants to get our program started. We, we've been operating since 99.
What does a discretionary program mean?
That it is in an expulsion, a discretionary expulsion, a mandatory expulsion, or the court can order children to the program.
Where do they stay when they're in the...
It's just a day program, and it's there in Florisville. We used to have two programs. We had one in the building that we're located in, and we had one in Florisville. And when we lost some grant funds, we combined the two programs so that we could continue to operate.
Why did you lose the grant funds?
It was just the, the source chose to, to do funding another way, so we, we didn't keep the grant.
Do the, our backup, are the students required to find their own transportation to the program?
Not Karnes County. Karnes City ISD provides the transportation. The families bring their children to our office here on Market Street, and then they provide the transportation.
Who shows these children as students in their school district?
The school districts...
For financial purposes?
The school districts keep their ADA funds, so that...
Each school district keeps their own?
Yes.
Whatever students they have participating in this program, they claim those?
Correct. They have a campus number for us.
Who keeps track of entrances and where they're going, students?
Right now, Florisville ISD does all of that. They, they are the central hub, and then they send it to each of the school districts, and then they do their own teams.
Do the school districts contribute to the program financially?
Yes, sir, as far as transportation, the meals, those kind of things, yes, sir, they do. They pay, and they pay for a seat that goes to Florisville ISD.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. I figured that would be a pretty good load, either on your department or Florisville, if there was not some funding from the schools.
I invite any of you to go see us. We'd love to have you come out there.
I've been there, not as a student. You know, kind of passively. You probably know Bud Box.
Yes, sir, we're very closely with him.
And Bud and I had something going on, so I visited. It's a very nice campus. It's new, it's not something that was left over. I think it was designed for what it's being used for. It's a special purpose facility, not a, here's something we can use kind of a thing, so.
Yes, sir.
Is that the same place where they work and some of you go gardening?
Yes, sir, it's where the, it's the same location where the garden days is, yes, sir.
Any, any other questions, comments? Do we have a, I haven't heard of a motion?
I'll make the motion, Judge, to, to approve, for approval. I'll second it.
Any, any other discussion? We all anticipate. Let's, let's pass it and then we'll see that sign. Any other discussion from the court? All that's heard of the motion as presented to signify by a vision right hand. All opposed, same sign. I oppose to it. I don't really think it's that much value to the schools. And I may not know what I'm talking about, but I suspect I know as well as anybody else here. All right, let's move on to Carrie. Item 11 on the agenda, discuss approved, disapproved presentation of final construction documents for the restoration of County, Karnes County courthouse, page 2, by project architect Louis Fisher, AI of Fisher Hickey. Officer Lewis says Fisher is, Fisher, oh, there you are, I didn't see you, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Fisher.
We have two items on the agenda, and they're both related, this, item 11 and 12. The first item is, I think, just a, an item that acknowledges that the Commissioners Court accepts the, the plans and the project manual, specifications of the project as, as completing, as complete, that therefore proving the project to move forward with other types of, of procedures such as the bidding process that will be eyed the next item. We've been meeting with the committee on a regular basis since last spring, so I, I believe most of you are very familiar with what's in the plans and specifications. I want to thank the county for working in such a cooperative way and to congratulate y'all, the way your county officials have worked together and county department heads to... and county department heads to come up with the restoration plans. I think we've got some really good uses for this building. And this will complete the restoration. So it includes the exterior restoration, the interior restoration and rehabilitation, and the site work that goes with the original courthouse square of the county in terms of landscaping and sidewalks, accessible parking, and those kinds of things. So I'd ask for y'all's approval of the plans, I suppose, first, or any questions you might have about those plans.
Mr. Fisher, the completion plan includes the clock tower on top of this note?
Correct.
Thank you.
Where is the clock tower coming from that will be put on top?
It will be fabricated as construction, as constructed. And it will be a system of steel, steel construction that will tie into the base of the clock tower that still exists. And then that will be constructed up through the roof as a steel frame. And then a masonry veneer will be put on it, just like any masonry veneer building. That will reduce the weight of having a solid masonry tower that was once there, which was, you know, four or five bricks thick, going all the way up. That will assure that the foundation is capable of supporting the tower to have the steel structure. And then it will be built out of wood windows and slate roof, and so it will be built as a piece of construction matching the original building. And then the clocks will be, will be purchased from a clock manufacturer. They won't be historic clocks, but the dial will be historic looking and have a, you know, electric mechanism to run the clocks.
I hate to sound crazy, but will the clocks be automated, or will we have to go in there manually and set those? Because, you know, I don't know the historical commission how they'll do it.
No, I think they're mainly interested in the visual appearance of the clock, the hands, the dial, and so they'll look historic. But it'll have an electric mechanism that'll run the clocks.
It will actually operate the clock itself?
Yes.
Will it be electric?
I think electric, yes. Well, it won't be, if the hand-wound or pendulum type clocks are historic, and they would just be too complicated, probably too expensive, so these will be electric.
We're not going to have to sign DVD, but it'll run up and down.
Exactly. Like door that flip with pendulums or anything.
If I remember, I think this was discussed at some previous time, but I'm thinking that, I recall that the clock tower had once created a leakage problem into the building. Will that all be resolved with the, with the way it's tied in?
Yes. You know, as anything penetrates a roof, there needs to be proper flashing between a roof plane and a masonry wall. So we've been using copper on those flat areas of roof that are the most durable. And so we'll probably have copper flashings tying into a copper flat roof at the top, and a slate goes around on the mansard or the slope portions of the roofs.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll comment that Mr. Fisher's wanted to get these plans to me a few days ahead of this meeting, so I can look at them and make any suggestions. He's been, he and Mr. Hannity have been very receptive to my suggestions during our meetings, and so I hope that I have a few days to look at them before the bid, actual bid plan to us, so I can make any suggestions as to how, you know, what we change in the bid document.
Yes.
I have looked at it, right?
Yes, sir.
So any of you who want to look at them and look at the documents, which is the one to look at them.
Will the changes be a court decision or your decision?
Well, it would be, I don't plan to change any, any of the bid specifications. Probably maybe in something about how the bid is specified. Probably my own suggestion, do you understand that?
I believe so. And let me also say that I talked to your lawyer, Jeff Chapman, yesterday afternoon, and he would like to have some time to review the contract form that we're using. We're specifying the standard AI form of construction, but he has supplemental conditions that he wants to attach to it. He said he would use the contract that he used on the jail as a basis, so he's not going to have to reinvent the wheel. But he wants to make sure that he is able to include those things, that he wants to modify the standard AI agreement to your benefit. And so I would like to suggest in the next item that we give us, give ourselves about one more week to review the plans and specifications before we go out to bid, so that we can coordinate the things that Commissioner Gower is talking about. And if he has any items that he wants to share with y'all, or y'all look at and get back to me, we'll have time to change those minor points. And also time to tie down all of what we call the front-end sections, which would be all the contracting procedures and specifications.
Well, what do you, what do you, tell me how we're going to do this, and what point are we going to do what?
Okay, let me, can I hand out a schedule?
Sure. Let's see, I think it's very important.
So this is a schedule that we've been following, as things have gotten accomplished, I've checked them off. So here we're at September 30th, and Commissioners' Court meeting to approve the advertisement construction bids. I've changed the next item from what we discussed in our meeting last week because of the discussion with Jeff Chapman, pushing the dates to October 14th and 21st for the advertisement of bids. So that gives us about two weeks here to wrap up things. Then we would have the bid date on November 4th. And on that day, we'd review and then make a recommendation to the committee, and that recommendation would go to Commissioners' Court for review. And then on your meeting, probably in the 30th of November, Commissioners' Court would approve the contract selection, hopefully. And then we can begin contract negotiations with the contractor. We would have a month or s- month to get everything tied together, get them, their bonds submitted to you, get any other paperwork submitted, and then we could begin construction after the first of the year. The November 16th date relates to the grant application to the Texas Historical Commission for funds to help pay for the restoration project. Our office will be completing that grant application by the 16th is our goal. It's not due at THC until next February, but we want to get it done before the holiday season. And since we've got, we've got a lot of background information because we've submitted before, we feel like we can complete it by the 16th. Then, next year, construction will begin, but then the THC will review those grant applications. And I don't have a date here, but it's in April of next year when they determine what funds they're going to give out. And they may have two bid periods, not bid, but two grant periods next year, one in the spring and one in the fall. And we're not sure how that's going to work yet, because they haven't issued that, but we may get funds maybe in one bid period for the maximum amount that they're going to give us, or they may try giving us two grants in two different bid periods. I think that's really an internal, internal procedures at the Texas Historical Commission. And then we anticipate the completion of construction of the courthouse by the fall of 2017. I think 18 to 20 months, something like that is what this project's going to take.
I don't understand the dates on this, when you get down to November the 4th, the bid due date, and then November the 30th, Commissioners' Court approves contractor selection, and then go back to November 16th, complete the grant application, and then back again to November the 30th. Why are those takes that way? Doesn't make sense to me. That's not the way they ought to be.
No, they probably shouldn't be. There are two different processes. One is the bidding process, and that follows sequentially. Where we receive the bids, they turn in their bids on the 4th of November.
Fourth of November.
And we, we then take those back to our office. Of course, those have to be filed with the county clerk, but we will review those bids and make a report to the county. Then the county has time to consider those bids and determine who they will select as the contractor by the 3rd. So we're giving a month and therefore, for review by the county, and, you know, if we want to ask any questions, we want to review the qualifications of any of the subcontractors, that sort of thing. The grant process is separate, and we'll be completing the grant application on the 16th. And, but like I say, that's months early, we don't really need to complete it until February. Now, what the, what my understanding was, is that we're going to go ahead and start the construction on this project and move forward with it, knowing that we don't have a grant in place at this time. But, once we get monies, if we get monies, we really think we will for this project, that we will start, at any, they will reimburse their portion that they're going to reimburse from the point where they determine and have approved the grant application. So between the time we start construction and they approve any monies, we'll be paying 100%. We get the grant application, then we'll be getting the percentage that's written into the grant for reimbursement by THC after that point. But this is the way to move the project forward.
If I remember from our previous discussion, the remaining portion of the Phase Two is about 7 million?
Yes, sir. 7 million.
Could I ask the courts if they are, if Karnes County is prepared to pay for the whole reconstruction if the grant is not with the Karnes County?
And I can tell you whether we are or not, I don't think we've agreed to at this point. I'm trying to be sure I understand all of this, so I know what our obligations are and when they're going to be to do a particular thing, and I still don't understand this date, this doesn't make any sense to me.
We haven't committed completely to pay for the full project, no. But there has been a commitment when the citizens voted to approve a bond issued for the courthouse of $4 million, which was approved, which they could be sold, so that is a commitment.
When was that done?
2000.
How much have you spent for that 4 million?
Please?
How much has been spent from that?
Of the 4 million, nothing, the bonds are not being sold.
I think it was believed that, you know, with oil down and values down, it may change, but I believe it was thought that probably the county could afford, possibly afford their portion of it without having to sell the bonds at this point. They could fund it out of, out of tax revenue.
But you know, it's tense, in my opinion, that the county voted to go ahead with the project, I mean, the citizens did, so I think we're obligated, regardless how it's going to be, what's going to happen, grant or no grant, we're obligated to the constituents to finish that project, in my opinion.
When did we vote?
The people voted.
We?
They had the bond listed, he just told you, 2000. 2012.
When 2012?
Thursday, November 2011.
We don't know, we're all we're saying.
I just thought there should be a contingency plan, someone who didn't get the grant.
Well, the thoughts have been, once the bond was passed and the voters spoke their mind, that the county was going to complete the restoration irregardless of receiving funds from THC or not. As everyone's well aware, we have adequate money in our unreserved encumbered funds, and that's where any expenses will come for the restoration. It will not be taxed, the current tax dollars, it won't be funded that way.
So is not another plan like to get donations, funds, there's not a plan to?
No, because there's adequate funding available, adequate monies available within the-
That is to supply the county money if, if the budget, if the, the court is not.
We have more than adequate reserves in our unencumbered funds to meet our shortfall from October through December, which your normally recommendation is three to six months of operational expenses and reserves, which we have that, as well as up to the potential of $7 million that the completion would cost.
Well, I just didn't know whether there was a contingency plan or not, so that was a concern.
Do we know now that there's one?
Well, according to the law, there's one.
There's not a written plan.
I don't think there is, I may be wrong.
But there is, there is a funding mechanism available.
There's one available, is correct.
Other than THC.
But there's nothing been adopted by the court as there is to.
I would think-
There has not been any official action by the court, but there's been official action by the taxpayers to restore the courthouse. And we do have available $4 million worth of bonds that could be sold.
Could be sold.
If needed. But if we have it in unreserved funds, why settle the taxpayers of the county with interest costs? That would be accumulated once the bonds are sold.
Well, I would think with this progress that they're making, they should, should know what we're going to do, but what should we?
Once we get the final number. I'm trying to find out what we know, and what we don't, and I haven't found out anything at this point, that's similar.
Well, in the current budget adopted night before last, there is $2 million budgeted out of unencumbered funds to begin this phase of the process.
And the possible cost of the completion from here on is how much?
Estimated at 7 million.
I know we've got an estimate.
7 million.
Which is considerably more than 2 million then.
Mr. Fisher, is 2 million sufficient to carry us through till the next budget year?
That's how we came up with that number, is that we made an estimate of how much money was going to be needed in fiscal year 2016. And then the remainder would be come due in the next fiscal year. And by then, we would also know whether or not we'd get the grant bonds.
How much are we allowed to get remaining, minus what we've already received? Is there like another 2 million or less, Pete, do you know?
It should be like 3.75 million.
That we're, we still have, have the chance to receive?
The eligibility.
Do you remember, does that sound right?
I was going to say 3.8, but we're in the close vicinity.
So-
The maximum that can be received from THC is 6 million.
The maximum from here forward? The maximum from here forward?
The total maximum for courthouse restoration is six million.
Okay, and we've received how much so far?
Approximately two, a little less than two million.
So there's four million left, is that correct?
Approximately.
That's don't throw figures around.
There wouldn't be more than four million still available from THC.
And they will not fund more than half of the project, will they, Mr. Fisher?
The percentage has changed over the years and I don't know what this next one is, but I, they've been even more generous than fifty percent, but I think it's down to fifty percent.
So that would put us at a maximum, if all the estimates are correct, of about three and a half million if everything went in our favor.
Yes, three and a half from THC and three and a half from the county would be the worth of money that comes from.
The original grant awarded, we had a reimbursement of sixty-six point six seven percent, but the latest two that have been considered emergency grants have been funded fifty-fifty.
We get fifty-fifty, I think that...
And the emergency stuff is not counted as the, it is, it goes against that, so?
Total.
So it's way three point five coming?
Goes against the total.
Okay, everybody here on the court?
I think they should be, we should know at this point. This court should know, have a plan, a backup plan or a plan, long-range plan or whatever you call it, but it looks like to me that that should be in place.
I think you can't really do that till you get the final number of what the estimated construction cost will be, in my opinion. You can't just throw, you can't guess till you actually know. Once we know what the total restoration cost will be to finish everything inside and out, we know, we know we already have two million dollars to start January of this year, is correct? That's...
October one.
October, yeah, but, so, and then, once we get the final number, which would be in, according to this thing, would be in, Saint, November thirtieth was when we approved the contract and selection.
Which November thirtieth? I hadn't found that out yet.
Two thousand and fifteen.
Well, it didn't say that.
But see, you don't have a plan to cover if you, you know, everything, if, you know, the whole, whole...
We're only a million dollars here, a million dollars there, but in essence, we are a million out. The plan would be, there's two million allocated from unencumbered funds for this coming fiscal year. There's four million potentially available from the unsold bonds, so that's six of the seven million. So at the most, we have a million exposure if the seven is a correct figure. That's, that's a lot of money, I understand, but most of it is there.
You don't plan to do the four million?
Well, once we have the actual bids received and can analyze them and know what our total cost is going to be as far as the physical construction restoration, not including furnishings, et cetera, some furnishings are included, then we'll know exactly what the court is looking at as, and once THC makes their grant award, then we'll know exactly what the court's looking at as far as their match or total out of pocket.
When can we expect to know that?
The awarding is supposed to be in March, Mr. Fisher?
April.
April. So by that time, we'll have our bid cost on construction restoration because we will receive that and award that in November of two thousand and fifteen. And then we'll have the notification from THC as to what our actual grant funding will be, what the award will be, and then the difference will be up to the court to fund, be it from four million dollars of bonds, be it all from unencumbered fund balance, or if the court so desires, be it from future tax revenues.
Is the grant based on need?
The, the grant is based on, at this point, twenty or twenty-five factors and you get scored on each one. And in the past, need has been, for the emergency grants are very, that's very important because that's saying that the building is endangered and in this case, we need a new roof to protect the rest of the building and so they gave based on that. So need's a part of the overall grant plan. We've scored rather highly and these are things, they're using the exact same scoring system each time for the last nine, this'll be the ninth round, and you get the same points. So we think we're pretty high up, but we feel like we have a good opportunity to continue to receive funds.
But if the court commits to seven million dollars this week or next week, is it going to affect our ability to apply for that? Is the grant gonna go to somebody else in East Texas who needs the money a lot worse than Carls County? You follow me?
Yeah, but I don't know the answer to that question.
But it could be a factor.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when we started out, we were pretty poor and although we're not flush now, we're certainly better off than we were and if that, if that is a major factor in the thing, it could cut us off at the knees.
It should not be a major factor. They've given to Bear County, they've given to, you know, so many fifty counties across the state, we've received grants and not all of them are all small counties. They, it's really based on, you know, the age of the building, the historical integrity of the building, the number of historic designations, all sorts of history things that they see as important because that's what they're doing as an agency.
This is also why the recommendation to the court was only to put in the budget two million dollars rather than to say we'd fund a hundred percent of the project because that is what goes into consideration at application.
That's...
I think what we might end up doing here...
We don't have to send them a financial study.
Correct.
Is that, is approving the plans, no, no big issue there. Going out to bids, I don't think that's a big issue. Go ahead and keep moving with the project, but before we, when we come back and ask you to approve of any kind of bids, we ought to have two plans. We ought to have a base plan, I suppose, that says this is where the money is going to come from for the entire project as we know it today. And then, if we get grant monies in April, we can deduct funds that the county would contribute from that original plan. So that, then we really would be able to show very clearly to everybody how we're going to pay for this before we contract with the general contractor.
But there's such a demand for the grant money, there's a heck of a lot more grant applications than there is money to cover.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I say we come up with a plan that shows how we're gonna come up with the money without using the grant funds and then we, if we're fortunate enough to get that, we can deduct.
And also historically, no pun intended, THC has tended to continue funding two existing projects.
That was the thing I was gonna mention, that once, once they buy into it, they want...
Because they wanna see a real pretty picture that they can sell to the next group of legislators to continue the program.
No guarantee, but just a probably.
Well, my main concern is we don't put the history of this together. You know, there was just a, the asko from the start, so, you know, adjust, and it was twice as much money wise as the bids were. And so, that, that's really the biggest concern. I just don't wanna repeat.
Well, I think we're already on the road where we wanna be or not.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Have we had big overruns on the project to this point?
I don't think so.
That's, I think that's what misses.
How about the roof? It's gone over.
Yeah, it has.
I don't think it has.
I don't think so either.
I think she's asked for money several times.
Oh, so many to continue?
Well, those are, those are different things within the contract. I don't think we've done over our contract at all.
No.
There may have been changes to that contract, but it's taking from and adding to in different areas.
And we add twice more to her...
Yeah, I'm certainly cognizant of what Mr. Stimson's saying, that projects start at one thing and seem to grow and that's why I asked Mr. Fisher if we were pretty well within budget, you know, if it wasn't, what the jail start out at seven and it's gone to eleven or something, whatever it is now, and still not finished and that's what we don't wanna see.
Yes.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And I don't wanna see that either, that's why we got an independent estimator to prepare the estimate for us so that it wasn't just my estimate, but it was also a professional estimator.
And he's the only estimator?
Yes, ma'am.
Ken, are we, I mean, okay, I'm looking at this thing, you're gonna, on the number twelve, we're gonna, we're gonna advertise on the county, on the countywide on seven and fourteen?
The schedule changed that to the fourteenth and the twenty-first.
Okay, 'cause we meet on the thirteenth of October, just so they know, and then also we meet on the tenth of November and that'll help the schedule too, with some of the bid process.
Well, you have certain requirements, you have to advertise for two weeks, there has to be a week on the way before bids can be opened.
But based on the schedule, I was just saying.
It, it could help us, we might be able to accelerate it if everything falls into place quickly.
Mr. Fisher, was his, was the estimator close to your estimate?
Yes, ma'am.
You're saying that these dates that are on our schedule today are not correct?
That I, I, I talked to Jeff yesterday and I'm recommending that we change them today.
Slide everything a week.
To October fourteenth and...
Twenty-first.
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 For the bidding.
Eleven, four, for the award, I guess.
For opening.
Opening.
And then your award on the thirtieth.
Well, now, y'all sure about the opening?
On the proposed schedule, it's November fourth to open, but at that point in time, they will just be opened...
Where's the proposed schedule?
This.
Okay, the updated schedule, that we have.
Correct, and then on the thirtieth, the actual awards and choosing of the contractor will take place.
I was assuming that date, is that the correct date for the meeting?
That's the last working day, yes.
Okay.
Okay, have, I, you know, I'm sorry, but we've got a schedule here that you're relying on and it's got November fourth, November thirtieth, November sixteenth, November thirtieth, and I'm not clear what we're talking about.
Well, I think the only reason that Mr. Heck's schedule, Mr. Heck, Mr. Fisher's schedule has November thirtieth following November fourth is because that coincides with the bid, the advertisement and the receiving of the bid and the awarding of the bid.
I haven't heard him say that.
Then the sixteenth is when they anticipate to complete the grant application. That's, those are two different processes, that's why there's two November thirtieths listed on there.
Doesn't make any sense at all.
Well, I, I follow what he's doing.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you're trying to explain it in some way that, that nobody else knows but you and him, apparently.
Okay, so if you take out the first November thirtieth that he has and add what's supposed to transpire on that day to the second November thirtieth, we'll have two actions taking place on November thirtieth.
On the same day?
Correct.
And is that what you're recommending?
Yes, sir.
Been nice to have said that.
Do you, do you all have the estimate that the...
So that on, on the November, the actual November thirtieth date, we will approve the contractor selection and approve the grant applications to be submitted to THC?
Yes, sir.
All of that on the same day of November thirtieth?
Why, did you have those estimates?
The committee does, yes.
And they are in that seven million range?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other questions from the court? Well, I'm glad you're all understanding exactly. So what do we need to approve at this point?
I think it's just accepting the construction documents as, as ready to be bid and then the second motion would be to allow us to put, put the project out to bid in the countywide on those two days.
Where are the documents that we're ready to...
Right here, here, Steve. Plans, various specs.
Well, you know, it'd be nice if the whole court could see what you've seen, Pete, but we have not.
Sorry, I just handed it to Pete because he's on the committee.
Well, we, we obviously can't go through those and, I, well, I can't, maybe y'all are smarter, well, almost sure that y'all, but we don't have any time to look at them and see what we're looking at. And we can't do it, what, seven million left to do and sit here and look at that in five minutes, that's crazy or not part of the financial world, it's crazy. Now, seeing anybody else's.
See, these documents are mainly in this office. Item number eleven, I approve that we accept these construction documents presented to the office, Mr. Fisher.
Second. Now, all we're, all we're doing is accepting them, so that's pretty benign.
And you're telling us these are the final construction documents?
Yes, sir.
Totally, final, okay. So this, this would be item eleven?
Yes, sir.
And there is a motion to approve the final construction documents, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That was made by whom? And who's second?
I did.
All right, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the approval of the final construction documents for the restoration of the courthouse Phase Two furnished by the architect signified by raising your right hand? All opposed, same final, but it's all motion carried. And well, item twelve, now, we've got, discuss approval, disapproval, advertising for bids for the restoration of courthouse Phase Two, Carls County courthouse Phase Two in the Carls Countywide on October fourteenth and October twenty-first, is that a date you change it to? If that's a change from what's shown in our schedule?
Yes, sir.
The bid for construction be open?
November four.
November fourth, not October twenty-eighth.
Mr. Fisher, that advertisement will be necessary to be submitted by ten AM on the ninth due to the Columbus Day holiday.
Okay.
To the newspaper, you mean?
Correct.
Ten AM on the ninth?
Yes.
Will we also put that on our county website?
It can, yes.
I'd like to make the motion for item number twelve to approve advertising for the bids for the restoration of the Carls County courthouse Phase Two, the Carls Countywide. Originally, the motion presented to us was October the seventh, I would like to make that October fourteenth and if it was October the fourteenth, I'm gonna move that to October the twenty-first to two thousand and fifteen. The bids for construction will be open... The bids for construction will be open upon this motion, this agenda item shows October the twentieth. I would like to make it November the fourth, two thousand fifteen. Is that clear?
Clear to me, clear to the court.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? If all in favor of the motion signified by raising your right hand, all opposed, same sign, all forty-four. Okay, well, item thirteen?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. Discuss approval, disapproval, authorizing Judge Long to sign annual contract for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen with S and P Communications for the two-way radios, Francis Airtime and Service Agreement. In the Rose and Bridge Department, author, uh, author was Michael Watney. Where's Mike? Is he...
Present.
You're drunk.
Yeah. What we do is every year, we'll be coming back and signing a contract with S and P for the two-way radios. And all it is, it's going to be an ongoing thing. So I'm here for this year, and then I'll be back same time next year.
How many does that form?
Uh, it's on the contract. I don't have a copy of the contract.
Twenty-eight?
It's twelve radios.
I was going to say ten or twelve, huh?
I'm looking at this here, it says twenty-eight.
It's twenty-eight, yeah, 'cause we added the new equipment.
Oh, okay.
But I want to know why...
It's thirty. Yeah, it's thirty.
Thirty?
Yeah.
And it's too portable?
Well, yeah, but twenty-eight and too portable.
Yeah, those are the flags.
Why does it say one-twenty-one, year one, year two, year, year three, and year four? I'll say one-twenty, but then you look at the contract, it says annual two hundred fifty-two dollars per radio.
You're on the maintenance part of it? That's the maintenance, the gold...
Airtime service agreement?
Airtime. Airtime, what it is, thirty radios, two hundred fifty-two dollars per radio comes out to seventy-five hundred dollars. Seventy-five, sixty. That's your airtime.
On this one, there's a service agreement adjustment form, whatever that, that comes up to thirty-six hundred annually.
I think that's...
Thirty-six hundred is the maintenance agreement. That's if they got to come repair it and everything. What it is with this one, they don't charge us nothing to travel on.
Okay.
They don't travel no expenses towards the radios or anything.
Okay, so we're paying seventy-five, sixty, and thirty-six hundred?
Yes, sir. And one of them is a maintenance agreement, and one of them is the airtime.
My concern is, since this obligates next year's fiscal funds, and we're still in fiscal year fifteen, can we do that prior to the actual fiscal year? Can we enter a contract in fiscal year fifteen that's for fiscal year sixteen?
Yeah, so, and this is, this is the start to, I'm trying to, I'm sorry, I'm trying to completely understand this. Date of service begins on one-one-sixteen to twelve-thirty-one-sixteen?
What it is, is their contracts start from January to December, and ours starts in October. So what I'm trying to do is make sure, because that way we can pay it, whatever it comes to do in January, we've got the authorization to pay it.
Would you say, no, it should be put in maybe in the next half-year, during, during, during that budget year?
In October, November, December, anytime prior to January first, but I think it needs to be after October first because we're obligating fiscal year sixteen's monies.
Would there be a problem with waiting for this one on after the, after the new F one?
No, tomorrow's the new year.
Yeah, I know, but you know what I'm, you know what I'm...
No, there ain't no problem.
Just to make it more, so it can come out of that one?
Yeah, 'cause the money is set to come out of next year's budget.
Yeah, it was in there.
Yeah, it's the same cost.
So if we sign this agreement now, are they going to request funding now? Are they going to want their funding ninety days prior to the contract?
They, they, what it is, is Cheryl turned around and said she wanted the contract, and I got with them. They don't have no problem with it 'cause this contract, we really don't have to pay it till January.
And we won't.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We don't have to.
Can we, her, since it's on, on it here, can we vote on it, but make it, put a stipulation it's not going to get paid till the next budget year?
But it would be signed today, and I think it needs to be signed in the fiscal year that it's obligated.
We do it all the time. We do contracts all the time, or is it...
Wait a second, what are you saying?
Do you want to say it? Am I want signature?
I would think that we wouldn't want to sign a contract obligating next year's, that's not going to be paid till January with next year's fund until next fiscal year, which would be tomorrow or after.
Did y'all sign Tyler the other day? So that was all...
Well, part of that is this year's monies.
Well, I'm not a legal expert, but it, to me, it would look like you could pass, you could pass the thing and indicate in the motion that it would take effect after ten-one and would be signed after ten-one. Would that pass muster?
Well, technically, it's not a contract, and it's due until January first, so why are we even signing it three months in advance?
Why do we, yeah, why do we need to sign?
Because her office is...
Because what?
The auditor's office one.
Sign for the current contract we're in now, not for next January's. Because we haven't even received the bill, so Cheryl wouldn't have asked anything about next year's. She would have asked about this year's contract.
She requested so she could pay.
That's on this year's, because we haven't received the bill for next year's. The contract she requested was the contract for services that we currently have right now on the two-way radios, not for next year's contract for services.
Communication problem.
Herb, have you...
Just put it on the next one and make it...
Put it on the next one.
Have you looked at that?
He's...
That sounds good. We'll do it that way. That way we're filing next year's fiscal year, and we don't have to wait.
You signed off on it?
I just looked at the form and everything. Looked at anything.
A man.
Let's, let's put it on the next one.
Put it on the next one.
Okay, that's fine.
Thanks, 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 ma'am.
Good thing. Get your thinking better, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are we on item fourteen?
Yes, Judge.
Okay, discuss approval, disapproval, purchase of materials, including twelve thousand BTU AC heat units, or AC slash heat, both air-conditioned heat. Wiring, telephone, computer line, setup for office space, twelve by twelve for maintenance supervisor, upper P, yeah, P.
All right, in the maintenance building, one big little office in there. And so, they operate out of one building instead of the building next to it. This, you all have a list of materials that totals to forty-nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. It lists all these items.
How much?
Forty-nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. She should have, should have it in here, in the third floor here. And I'd like to get this office set up in the building over there, so maybe be in one building.
Pete gave me this the last time, and I looked all through here, and all the prices, and they're pretty, they're pretty close. They're all within reason, except the phone lines. I'm not sure what the phone lines are going to be, but it's right here at six hundred and eighty. But the windows and trim boards, everything else, it has anything to do with construction. Within, it's within reason here. Probably going to be maybe a little less than this, but it's within reason. It's within reason.
And whose office is this going to be this year, Pete?
Well, this is Warren Simmons all this time. And I hope, hope to set up in there, get my files in there and stuff, too.
I'm starting, what was working?
Look at this.
I mean, why, why do you need an office here?
Well, this...
How long have you been on this court?
Four years and nine months.
And, and you've not had an office during all of that time, have you?
Well, I've had space over here where I rest up, I sit and work. I have a lot of files at home in my shop that I want to bring all, pull down data files and all those things, but I put them on the county property. With this office, it was discussed, this office might move into the, into the sheriff's office this way.
I'm not, who discussed it?
It was discussed.
Not it was discussed, when did the court discuss it? Don't, what did anybody?
We discussed location of offices.
I believe Judge, I think it was discussed when we discussed the location of offices about moving and shifting around. I think it was kind of discussed about the judge being at the sheriff's office now. Now, I don't know if we made any concrete decisions on it, but there was a discussion on it.
It's something I don't know anything about. I'm just trying to find out what we're doing.
I think Judge stepped out that, I think he stepped out that day, Judge.
I could have been, yeah.
I think so.
Still don't really understand.
Herb, do you remember it being discussed? You had hoped going to Sheriff's Office and discussed it to...
Yes, sir. Cheryl had made the motion.
Do you remember it being discussed?
I remember that when we approved, I don't know the date, but I know we made approval to take that back in office to allow Pete to turn on electricity and get things set up in there.
Are we talking about that, or are we talking about the judge motion? What were we talking about?
No, we're talking about the, we're talking about...
What did we make a motion on? Because you said...
On Warren's office, on, on Pete's, I'm talking about...
Okay, on Warren's office, yes.
But I made the deal to move the judge to the, to the sheriff's office, but we're talking about...
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Where's Warren?
You made that motion, maybe Herb just...
I'm sorry, tie it up there.
So we're, we're talking about Pete and Warren in office? Is that what we're talking about now?
That's my understanding coming...
Yes, I would, I would like to take all my files that I had at home and put them in the office somewhere. I thought that would be a good place to do it.
Pete, I'm not sure, why are they at your house? Why aren't they, and some of them, we've got buildings and we've got empty spaces, and why aren't they up here?
We didn't have that much space from the start, and I started file, bought the file cabinet, put them in my shop at home, so I didn't have files that I had.
And, and you paid for all of the, out of your pockets, or you're saying that...
I paid for all the file cabinets. There's nothing there that belongs down except the papers.
But it seems, seems to me that the paper should be up here in, in...
I want to bring them on account of...
Well, is it them keeping you from it?
They just tell me what's later, I'll bring them. I've got enough space for them.
We've got empty buildings all over town. I'm not sure. But, I know, obviously, I don't know...
There's file cabinet space right here.
I know. There, there's file space all over. Well, let's, let's move on with whatever we're going to do. I'm not sure what it is, but...
All right, item number fourteen, we have a list of materials.
Five thousand dollars worth, basically, to fix up a place for you and the maintenance man?
That's correct. I made a motion that we approved, purchased new materials, so we can fix the office space and...
There's been a motion, wait a minute. There's been a motion on a second that we fix up. I'm not sure what we're going to fix up, Pete, but Pete, you made it to go ahead and explain it to...
All right, we want to fix up, we want to fill in office, office space in the maintenance building, which is the Cannell Building, that we have the truck for. Put two stuff in there for the maintenance supervisor and a space for mine also. So I've made a motion that we purchase five thousand dollars or four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars fifty cents worth of materials for that project.
And I second, and James second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signified by raising your right hand? And all opposed, I'm opposed to it. Motion carried four oh one.
Can I ask just a question real quick? Pete, you mentioned the truck is stored there. Why is that truck not being used? Warren's using his personal truck. I haven't seen him yet in the county truck. Why is it not being used?
He drives it sometimes. I don't know that he, I don't know if he drives every day, but he drives it sometimes.
Well, I know any time he's come to our building to do anything with all the lights that he's doing, he's using his personal vehicle.
Do we have insurance that covers his personal vehicle?
Not his personal vehicle, no.
We're not paying them money, are we?
He has not turned in anything for reimbursement.
Well, we have a, we have a responsibility if he's working and using his personal vehicle.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because I, it was very important that we get a maintenance vehicle, which we did. But we transferred one to that department, and we've since bought a trailer to haul the long way around. But yet, I always see Warren in his personal truck, even at Alamo, picking up materials and things like that, so... I just, if we're going to have a vehicle, and he hasn't done any mileage reimbursement requests, but yet there's fuel allowance in the budget to fuel the red maintenance truck, so if we're not using it there, the county, I'm sure, could use it somewhere else.
Where is the truck kept?
In one-eleven North Brown, the Cannell Building.
In the maintenance shop. Hope he doesn't drive it, not drive his personal truck.
Well, he does need to be driving his personal vehicle, you know that. We, we do not, should not have any responsibility for that. Pete, there shouldn't be anybody working for the candidates driving them for candidates. You know that, do you not? Well, then, you're sitting here saying that we should be responsible in some way, and we shouldn't. Craziest thing I've ever heard. Let's, let's get this on the next agenda and discuss it again, and everybody get, make sure that you understand what's going on. Well, what?
Well, okay, we're confused vehicle on the next agenda, but we're on item number fifteen right now.
And has there been a motion on a second on item fifteen, the transfer of five thousand dollars?
I would add, I'm going to make a motion to approve transfer of five thousand dollars for, from item line number one hundred, that's five hundred, that's five seven five one, for the purpose discussed on item fourteen.
I'm not sure there needs to be a transfer of funds because the description for that line item is for the storage building slash maintenance workshop.
So it's within the same there?
Yeah, so there's not any line item transfers that can be made. Not as long as those expenditures are made this year.
I just want to be sure, so I don't need to...
Okay, so there'd be no action taken on that, and you withdraw your motion?
Pete, you withdraw your motion?
You move on. And was there a second fifteen?
I had second and all.
Okay. So we'll move on to item sixteen on the agenda. Discuss approval, disapproval, contract with health claim plus for EMS building, Pete Thompson, VP of Marketing. Will provide presentation of services offered to answer questions, office should finish, carry. Office should finish, carry.
Uh, yes, of course, we've been in this discussion for a while now about, you know, the EMS billing and problems that I've seen with it since I've gotten here and things we're trying to change and because we want to be sure that we're recouping everything that we can. We don't leave any dollars out there that we don't have to leave out there. So, with that said, this is Pete Thomas. He's the VP of Sales and Marketing for Health Claims Plus. Just to give a little background on Health Claims Plus, I had used them for a couple of years back around two thousand three when I had a private ambulance company. They helped us get off the ground with our billing. Most of those people are still there, so that tells you there is some stability and longevity in this company. And, you know, I, I like what I see from them as far as reporting, access to files, things of that nature that I'm not getting with our current billing company. I tend to have to ask and wait four or five days to get what I need. And sometimes that, that doesn't work with the speed at which EMS runs all the time. So, with that said, I'll, I'll let Pete talk to y'all for just a minute and answer any questions. Thank you for taking time to see me. My name is Pete Thomas. I'm with Health Claims Plus. We've been doing ambulance billing since nineteen ninety-three in the state of Texas. And that is all we do, ambulance and fire billing. So, we feel that we can help your department collect all the revenues that are due under the, you know, ambulance guidelines. We currently serve about fifteen to seventeen services throughout the state. We only operate in the state of Texas. We've chosen to do that just because we want to make sure that we know what our constituents need. We charge a percentage of eight and a half percent of what we collect on. So, if we don't collect anything, there is no fee for that service.
How long do you try to collect them? What is it?
Thirty, sixty, ninety days. And that's what's good about working with a county is we can work with each department. If you want us to collect for ninety days, we can go after them for ninety days. We also set up collections on a different level. So, if you have constituents within your county that you would prefer that we not collect from them after their thirty days or ninety days, whatever you decide, we stop collecting on them. But if someone like me, if I drive into town and I always tell everybody that, if I drive into town and get in an accident and use their resources, go after me. You have a lot of oil workers that are here. Collect their monies that are due from them and, you know, keep it in your county.
When do you start collecting? When we get, when it lets you know when to start collecting? It's not something you just take on yourself, you're told once you start?
Yes, sir. What happens is normally when you get the ambulance call, we have, within seventy-two hours, we ask them to send us the bill. That way, you know, their report, we read their ambulance report. We log it into our computer systems and then within seventy-two hours, their first bill is sent out. So, we feel that the faster they get the bill, the faster most time they're gonna pay.
So, James, there are billing and collecting, not just collections?
Right, we're billing and collecting.
So, so on every, on every, every issue, it goes through you, so you're, you're collecting eighty percent or everything is collected? And if somebody's not, doesn't pay within ninety days, then you shut it down or you shut it down?
Yes, we either shut it down or we send it for further collections.
But then your howl is a picture and you need to collect them to make sure you don't get no percentage.
And that's through the collection, uh, collection agency. And like I said, most of the stuff, it goes pretty quick. We've done quite well learning all the guidelines in the state of Texas. There's a new ICD-ten, if you haven't heard of that. That's the latest thing to come out. Uh, gonna be making some, making some changes here in the very near future. As of October first, ICD-ten starts. And that's just a new way of breaking down how each bill is being done. As it is right now, when you do a bill, we work off about, I think, fifteen codes or so that are, you know, A O four two five. Based on, you know, ambulance fees, uh, we only bill for box and mileage is what we call it for now for most Medicare, Medicaid patients. But for private insurances, you can go after the incidentals that they use. The four by fours, bandages and all that kind of stuff. So, we do try to do that to make sure that you get the most revenue back to the department. And then, like I said, once if the bill is not, you know, paid, we can go to collections. You'll get a monthly report that tells you your accounts receivable, how many calls that are done, how many calls are broken down by payer mix, Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance. Uh, we can tell you just about where in the county all of your calls are coming from. And everything is done on a monthly basis, so it's really transparent for you when you sit there and look at where the funds are coming in and where it's going to.
When you say billing, I'm taking it that you're, if you'll pardon me, billing the easy hits as well as the hard cases?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, uh, none of it's really easy anymore.
Well, I understand, I mean you-
But, you know, but, you know, you're correct, sir. Yes, sir. We go after everything. Some people are gonna come in right away. As soon as they do their bill, they want to pay their bill right away or if they have insurance. Some people are gonna send in all their paperwork from an auto accident and not having any, any insurance information there. So, we will contact that person and let them, you know, say, hey, we need your insurance, Mr. David, uh, so we can make a, a bill. If we have an incident where paperwork isn't completed, we'll work with the department themselves to make sure that we have all the appropriate signatures and so on and so forth. Also, what we do is we make sure these guys maintain their licenses. If, if somebody fails to update a CPR card, we'll let them know because, because of federal guidelines, you're not able to bill if we're not licensed on every vehicle. So, those are items that we'll make sure that are taken care of annually and every so often if you have to renew your Medicare license, your Medicaid license isn't so on. And we will make sure that they're aware of when these items are up for renewal as well.
You said incidentals like four by fours or whatever, but yet when you bill, you bill for that too, don't you, Dennis?
Yes, but it depends on the insurance. So many insurances are going to the straight, uh, type of call and mileage, uh, billing. It's very hard to find those few insurances out there that do. Some of them do that. But most everything is a base rate plus mileage.
And your electronic patient care reporting system, if you have now, you have the ZO?
Yes.
And does it interact with you?
Yes, sir. We can interact with any of the systems. And that will, that will help me out because what we do is we get it, we do a quality assessment of the claim, make sure everything was medically correct, make sure we're not missing anything. Then I'm able to put that in a file and then they're able to go get it from the file. I don't have to do anything special to put it in their hands as we were doing with the other, uh, the other company. One thing back to David's question, Mr. Reynolds, uh, we'll get some training programs in with their billing people for our people to help them more accurately document things. Unfortunately, as hard as I try to stay on top of the changes in documentation styles, there are certain things for, especially coming up for Medicare claims where you're gonna need things documented a certain way, uh, not necessarily telling them what to doc- document, but how to document it when they find it. And not only that, but small things like getting phone numbers, getting next of kin phone numbers, finding, uh, insurance cards, uh, getting back with the sheriff's department if it was a wreck. Hey, you know, who's at fault, who's, uh, I, I think we're missing the boat on some of that stuff. Where this, our other company that we're relying on to do that, I, I've not seen a, I've not seen it happen, so.
And, and, okay, let me see if I got my head wrapped around this. Basically, what you have now and what this gentleman is proposing are both billing services, not what I would term collection services for, for bad past use. Is that correct?
Correct. Now, they will give us at, however we said it, thirty, sixty or ninety days after they've exhausted all avenues to get the, and, and the problem's not so much sending it to the insurance. It's when people have deductibles, they don't want to pay their deductible. People call, um, you know, they call us directly and say, hey, we're, we're not- I think a lot of our calls are getting marked down as self-paced that aren't getting collected. But there's insurance money there that our billing company we have is not finding. They're not trying hard enough. They're practicing what we call drop and drag billing, which is let's go get the easy money and just if the other shows up, it shows up. Unfortunately, that's what I inherited when I got here and that's why we want to make the change now. And in our, in our part, we don't write anything off of our books until it comes back to you guys. We don't have the authority to say, uh, this person is written off because they couldn't pay their bill or so. So, it goes back to you and you guys tell us who you say, you know, you might say so and so comes off because they're in accounting. But this gentleman, he has to pay his bill because it's not in accounting. So, that's the guidelines we look for. And then we do work closely with a collection agency that does soft collections. And once again, those collections are based upon how you guys want them done. We don't want anybody to be hassled. I mean, it's a medical bill. A lot of times when they call an ambulance, it's not because they want to. So, when we go after them, we try to make sure that they know, you know, you can pay five dollars a month if necessary without ruining your credit or so on and so forth.
Dennis, uh, you said you inherited another company and I'm sure they're on contracts. And when is their contract up and how does this contract start?
Awana and I were just having this discussion. There, we're actually, the contract with them is up. It's been up for a couple of months. Uh, it did run out and he contacted, he sent us another contract.
We haven't signed on-
No, we have not entered into a further contract. We're going to look at the current contract and make sure if we need to give them thirty days writing or whatever to get out. But even if we say we're gonna use Health Claims Plus, there's some transition overtime as far as getting them locked in to be able to bill because they can't just call Blue Cross Blue Shield and say, hey, today we're billing for Karnes County EMS. We have paperwork involved, all of that.
What about the ones that, maybe you touched on it, but you'll have a call say, you know, they didn't call the ambulance, say there's a wreck or something and y'all are dispatch. I mean, you get there and you have to get a refusal, you know?
Yes.
And that, and that ambulance cost to run out there, but yet they, we don't want the service, but, you know, thank you anyway. But there's a charge sometimes for mileage and our services going out there. Is that gonna be part of this process?
Yes. Yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna work on that. That's been, and, and when I got here and I took it over, it was, there were some things getting billed that, there were some things that weren't. Oh, well, we've never billed, we've never billed for that. We've never billed for that. Well, that doesn't necessarily make that-
Right.
You know, if you build somebody's insurance, you don't necessarily have to bill them. And, you know, it's just like if, if we respond to somewhere, let's just say that it's a person that's, that's dead, that we're not doing anything but verifying death and we're waiting on the JP, uh, we can still bill that. You're just billing a response without a transport. We have a fee for that in our fee schedule. But it's taken a while to work to that point because it was so, oh, that person died and we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna bill anybody for that. And, you know, that's, that's where we need to, we gotta get away from that.
I saw in your book you had, you had listed hardships. Exactly what is hardship?
A hardship is when they, we send out an actual form that's provided by the state. It tells us, you know, we ask for certain guidelines. Okay, it tells us what your bills are, so on and so forth. So, if you can't pay it, we just can't take your word that you have to pay for it. We take the hardship form and we turn it into the department and the department says, yes, they can't pay it. On, based upon hardship, they'll write that bill off of your, you know, off your report so you don't have any. And, you know, that's what he was talking about to respond to as well. A lot of times now, there's even first responder fees that many car insurances will pay. Might only be fifty or seventy-five dollars, but it may pay for their gas for them to roll out there. And a lot of services, I mean, several of the insurance agencies will pay that seventy-five dollars just to make sure that patient was okay and to reimburse the department versus having them, as I said, talk them into putting them in the back of the ambulance and charging them a, a large bill and insurance company have to pay that.
You know, Dennis, I've got, I've got to thinking what, just a minute, when we start the jail, and currently we do have our, whatever we have, you get calls to there. Do we bill the offender for the services or do you bill the county for the services?
The county, depending on, and this has always been kind of a headache because we have some county offenders that are in GO, but because we pick them up from GO, we don't know they're county offenders. And we transport them, it gets billed to GO, GO kicks it back, we find out it was a county offender. And then we, we send a bill, but it's county, uh, we don't, we don't worry about it too much. Like you say in there, a lot of those are just based up, based upon how your contract is written. Now, if you're a county agency or county jail and you have a state prisoner in there, you may want to go ahead and just bill that. I mean, even with the county SOD, all you're doing is just passing paperwork back and forth. The funds are transferring, but you keep a current accounting, accountant, or an accounting of what patients are being transported. Except for state funds, go ahead and collect the state funds. Otherwise, they'll, they'll never give it to you again.
Do ambulance services qualify for indigent reimbursement from the hospital district?
Yes.
So, then technically, an inmate that is a resident of Karnes County have to be transported, the hospital could be billed? Or the hospital could pay the county?
The indigent care, and I, I, and I'll apologize, I've tried to read that. I've tried to find somebody to instruct me on how indigent care insurance works. I know that, that Herb and I have had lengthy conversations about it. We're trying to find someone that can teach us the art of how indigent care works. The problem is, is the person, and I don't know who it is, works for the hospital that handles indigent care for the county. So, therefore, the county, the hospital basically sucks up all the indigent care funds for the county, so.
There's some grant money in that tobacco fund that the hospital works off of, so we can get it. Dennis, I know where it's from that side.
Well, and I know in the past when we've had these issues, if it's an inmate in our facility and they are not residents of Karnes County, then we can go back and bill that county or their hospital district.
And we do do that.
But if they're ours, either the hospital district gets billed directly because they're indigent or the county gets billed and then we recover it from the hospital.
Yeah, that's pretty much out of it.
Do we collect from the hospital?
I have yet to see it checked in two years that I've been here from the hospital district.
Has the district been billed?
As far as I know. Now, like I say, therein lies the other problem is when it leaves my office, I'm entrusting the person that we're hiring to do that job, to do that job. And even though I check up, those are, those are so few and far between. We may be done two since I've been here, both of which had happened when I was in the admissions court, so. But, and, and I can't, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you.
But that would be something your billing company would handle? Identified either as an indigent for Karnes or indigent for Guadalupe or whomever, y'all would chase it.
And their paperwork also sends in their, I mean, their current EPCR form, electronic billing form, sends off information to the state too, so we can, you know, track through the state where it's, how many individual patients are going on and so forth. But we're gonna try to collect every penny that you can get, you know, I hate to say this, but I tell everybody this all the time. We don't make any money unless we make you money, so. If there's a person out there that we know that we can go after without badgering them, we'll go after them. We'll review all the contracts, if he's got any written contracts with anybody, just to make sure that we follow the guidelines of the county track, to go after, to make sure the funding comes back to the department. We pride ourselves in making sure that these guys get their, you know, their money. We get paid as well, but we want to make sure everybody gets paid appropriately.
Realizing that we'll probably getting, be getting additional services, could you tell us what, Dennis, what percentage your current billing company is charging?
Uh, eight, it's-
Nominally the same thing?
It's, it's right. It's, they're just about the same. It's, it's right, it's, they're just about the same. It's, it's eight or 8.5 of one or the other. I believe it's eight.
Is the contract annual?
Yes.
Okay. Has Herb had a chance to slice it, dice it?
I've looked at it in a short, uh, in China.
Okay.
And, you know, just to give you an idea, I know I've passed on some other course, some of the monthly things you get are a billing summary by payer, tells you what they're paying each month. Charge entry production, that shows Dennis and us mainly for him, that shows you how many items that we charge. That way you can go back against the supply usage and so on and so forth. Then you'll get a pie chart that makes it easier for you to look at, like I said, Medicare, Medicaid, indigent, private insurance and so on. And detailed charge productivity report tells you patient's name, mileage is, everything that we did per patient. So you'll always have a complete running. We want to make sure that you're giving enough, given enough paperwork or enough reports to satisfy your needs. I mean, the biggest thing is to know, you know, my question is, where's our running? And we want to make sure that you know what you're running. And then it goes down to the adjustment detail report by patient. That is the write-off report. Well, we don't do any adjustments unless we're given the okay by the department.
On the worst case scenario that after 90 days, you have been unsuccessful, I take it the information that you have is packaged in such a manner that if Dennis and/or the county chose to go to a collection agency, it would be in a form that they could pick up what you've got and run with it without having to redo the whole, reinvent the wheel?
Yes, sir. That would be no problem to just transfer the information. As you brought that up to patient information, now just to let you know, to get into our building, you have to go through double lock doors, you have to key pads, because we do take patient information very important. We don't send anything, any patient information back and forth to the department without being encrypted. And we don't, we don't want to take any chances of passing on patient information. We take that very hard.
Well, I'm thinking about it. Y'all are like, y'all carry like insurance over that stuff, I, I, you know?
And, you know, we carry errors in emission insurances, breach pen insurances and so forth, because just to say if we didn't do a billing in time and, you know, you didn't collect your money that you were due to you, it would be our fault and we would make sure that you're reimbursed for it. And, you know, after 30 days, if something fell through, or 90 days or however long it takes, actually, it's a year after, one year, if we haven't done our part and we find out that we were negligent, the department would be reimbursed for that because we, you know, we want to make sure that we stay, keep it all above table and make sure we collect everything we can for you.
Dennis, you're comfortable?
Yes.
You've done the research, talked to them?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion to approve item number 16 as presented.
I'll stick to that motion. Is there any further discussion to take effect October 1?
I think whatever you deal with, all the other.
Yes, yes. The, the, the primary goal is to take effect October 1, but we're going to make sure that we're not violating any unforeseen terms with the prior.
And will that contract come back to court to sign or?
Uh, actually, I brought one with me.
So we can't sign it till after?
Well, we need to make sure that we're out of AR management first.
And, and we, we can, we can get it signed if it's not any, like I say, we're, we're...
And, you know, when I do pass it on, I'll make sure he knows that there are a couple of things I have highlighted. And on one part, it says to mark through, and it's just for you and Herb, is to make sure you mark whether you want the funds to be sent directly to the county or to the department or to us. You know, it's some, some agencies that, we deal with some smaller agencies that aren't always there, they send all their funds to us and then once a week, we just turn around and mail it all back to them. So just make sure that.
Just divide them by five and send them to the commissioners court?
There you go.
No, I mean, where would the best place be for the funds to go?
Well, the Medicare are going to go direct to us anyway because of how the bar system's set up.
The checks usually, depending on what address that the, the insurance or person has, sometimes they end up in Juana's office, which they give them to me and then I process them and basically take them back to the treasurer's office. And the rest of the checks come to my office and then we, we process everything out.
So when y'all are bidding, y'all, y'all give them an address center too?
Yes, we do. That's all we're asking. So what we'll do is if we're going to send it to here, it'll, it'll look, our business will say for business of, and it'll come directly to this department if they mail them any checks. And at that point, I'll just gotta go scan a copy or run a copy and make sure we write it off the books. And he's, he's used to all of that, yeah.
Well, Dennis, she take here straight to the bank when you get them or are you taking them to?
Yes, yeah. Since we changed everything over, I do the deposit and since I sent them over. Back in the old days, I took them ahead for the checks.
Here's the, here's the, and we got a thing, motion pending or?
Yes.
In a second.
In a second.
Any other discussion about the motion? All in favor of the pending motion signified by raising your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank y'all. Thank you, sir.
Rule number 70.
Yeah, we're going to pass that. She didn't have the stuff.
Yeah. Passing number 17.
Out of 18 on the agenda, acknowledged use of county clerk bail bond account, account number 1000373 of Falls City National Bank, or cash bonds and appeal bonds of Karnes County Court, County Court Restitution Account, account number 1000314 of Falls City National Bank, or restitution payment effective 10/1/2015 based on LGC 1117.052 and AG opinion TDM 282 and KP 0019, signatories on account, the county clerk or chief deputy county clerk and county auditor and/or first assistant county auditor. Do you have a first assistant county auditor?
Yes, I do.
Everybody doesn't always have what they're dealing with. You, you understand that better than anybody. Registry funds deposited with the county treasurer from March 1st, 2012 to September 30th, 2015 will be properly identified and moved from Karnes County General Fund to registry account after sheriff Sweetsie. Do you understand all this?
Yes, sir.
Good, we can explain it to the court or to those on the court that don't understand of which I'm the lead book.
Sure. We, we collect cash bail bonds. Whenever someone's arrested, the sheriff brings us their cash bonds. And then we also collect appeal bonds from cases that are coming from the JP court. There, it's an appeal bond. Those are not considered county funds and so they should not be deposited into the general fund, but into a registry account. They're considered a registry of the court. And so we had an account prior to March of 2012 that we used in Falls City and I just want to go back to using that account again so that I can refund those cash bonds or use the appeal bonds towards their payment, which is what we should be doing with them. And it's just basically like a clearing account.
Why didn't we review?
Back in March of 2012, we were supposed to deposit everything with the, with the treasurer at that point. And so that's what we were doing. And.
But with further review, because of some of the issues that have come up with refunding of bond money, it has been discovered that the registry for bonds can be a separate account with the county clerk and county auditor or their representatives as signators. They are not a part of the treasury of the county, just like district clerk has registry accounts that are under her authority by court order and not under the jurisdiction of the county treasury.
Do you have a certain amount of time you have, you're allowed to, you have to hold this money before you turn it over to a clearing account or is there a, just hit it today, put it in the clearing account tomorrow or what?
Well, that would be ideal, yes, to put it in immediately.
What have you been doing now?
Uh, some of it has, had been held prior to a few months ago and now we're putting it in.
Immediately?
Close to immediately, yes. And the account is in Falls City.
And these disbursements, any disbursements out of these bond monies, monies would not be done daily. Carol's office and my office would have to develop a schedule once a week. We'd issue checks. I mean, she can't just come drop in and say, I've cut all these checks, hurry up and sign them, I gotta make them.
Right.
We'll develop an internal schedule between us, but I would imagine it would at least be on a weekly basis.
And your office will have to audit those, that account?
Yes. And I, my department will be responsible for co-signing. Nothing can be issued on just one signature.
So Carol, all your accounts right now are, I mean, have you started this process yet? Are you going to start?
Right, tomorrow.
And then any monies that have been deposited in the general county fund from March of 2012 forward, she will make a accounting of that and then we will move those out of the county depository into the registry account.
What's been happening to the money that should have been there?
It's in the general fund.
Are you going to go back, search through each item of the general fund to get this?
Once Carol provides a listing of any bonds that have been received and deposited by her, then we will go back and make sure they have not been paid out in any kind of disbursement order and issue a check from the general fund to the registry fund of the county court.
This information goes from Carol to you?
Correct.
And then you require it to be?
Then we will ascertain that all those monies have been deposited in the county general fund and have not been paid out previously.
Will there be a monthly report?
There can be a monthly report, yes.
Well, I know it'll make, make work for anybody, but I, I would like to know how often there is a report and where it goes so that this is something that the court should see on a regular basis.
Well, that's fine. Any monthly receipts of cash bonds and any monthly dispersments of cash bonds can be reported.
I'll have a bank statement.
Right.
And, and you'll have, you'll audit the report, before you make the change, you'll audit everything so, I mean, we hadn't misplaced anything or something like that?
And make sure that it hasn't previously been paid out in a court order.
Right.
And that's the only way anything's going to be able to be paid out is it's gone through due process and the court has ordered issuance of a refund or allocation of the bonds elsewhere.
The county court.
Right.
Judge Al.
That's your.
Whenever she would bring a cash bond to us, we have set up a separate file. We put a copy of that bond and a copy of the receipt in there for easier tracking, so we should be able to move it over pretty quickly.
Awesome. Thank you.
Will it be moved fairly quickly?
Yes.
As soon as?
I'm asking them, I mean, I heard what you said.
As soon as the reconciliation can be done, yes.
Is that a lengthy process?
It should not be, Carol, should it?
No, it won't be lengthy, but I, I would say within two weeks.
Okay. How's that?
This is your form of announcement? This is your information, AG opinions and statements?
All right. Does there need to be any kind of other action or any effect? There's not?
Just acknowledgements.
Okay. But they share about 19, 20?
18. No, we're on 19 now.
Oh, we're on 19 now. Acknowledge the fiscal year 2016 salary orders for the county auditor, first assistant auditor, second assistant auditor to be in the court minutes of commissioners court as required by LGC. What's LGC?
Local county.
Okay. 152.031, small b, close brincis, comma, certified by district clerk Denise Rodriguez.
She'll have a copy of all three quarters. 45, yes.
Where'd you find it?
In your folder.
Good, that's a good one.
I'm pulling your folder out.
I'm scared to touch it.
Well, I'm pulling it out for you too.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Somebody with some sense.
None of them have a date. I don't know if that matters.
Yeah, I think it matters.
It does not have a date. Judge, we have two judges that signed that. They signed on different dates. Judge Ray did sign on the 24th of August. Judge Wilson signed on the 2nd of September and then was filed on the 10th of September. That's why we do not have any dates.
Well, what would be the proper date to put on it? It couldn't be effective until they both signed it. And it seems to me that the latter signature would be the proper date to put on it, the September 2nd, which is Judge Wilson's, the day he signed it. I'm, I'm not sure that's right. It seems like, Herb, you got any comments about?
I don't think it's effective October 1st.
Correct.
The 2nd date should be okay.
Okay, the, the September 2nd be?
And the salaries are not effective until October 1. They coincide with our fiscal year.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'm going to date each one of these September 2nd.
Your copy.
Okay.
Number 21, 20, 20.
Out of 20 on the agenda, discuss approved, disapproved, proposed changes to the compensatory time, holiday sick leave policies authored by Shelby.
Uh, the last meeting, we, when we discussed the comp time and the payout for being used comp time, we would suggest that we review all the policies, remaining policies, sick leave, the policy on holidays and the policy on overtime compensation. Committee was met with Chief Eubrow, Michael Watson, Groden Bridge, EMS Administrator Dennis Kelly, Vibe Malone, county treasurer, Carol Sweetsie, the county clerk, Judge Don LaWava and county auditor Juana Casper. If you look in your packet, gentlemen, there's a, first page is policy on sick leave. And I'm on the maximum accrual sick leave. The amount of unused sick leave, a regular employee should be allowed to carry over at the beginning of a new calendar year as, as full-time employee at 240 hours and a part-time employee of 120 hours. Prior to this, we would change that to 240. Prior, employees have been allowed to carry over a bunch of sick time in excess of 240 The discussion was, and we made a change in the policy, temporary till we approve the court, the court chose us to approve it, that the full-time employees will be only allowed to accrue a maximum of 240 hours of sick time. They won't accrue any more sick time till they work that down if, if they so choose. If they, just to get it below 240, then you will, you will earn your, your, your sick time back. And then we also put on there to reinforce the need to set a timekeeping system to actively reflect the correct number of hours up to a maximum. Once an employee with a maximum bank uses sick time, the system will start reflecting hours earned each month until the maximum amount is reached. Other than that, that's the only two changes that we made in the, in the sick leave policy. Any questions?
And Shelby, we can assess the maximum in a time clock plus 240.
You can?
Yes.
Currently, a full-time employee at a rate of four hours per day, I mean, the employee regularly should accrue sick leave at a rate as follows. Full-time at a rate of four hours per day or a maximum of eight hours per month. A part-time, two hours per day or a maximum of four hours per month. And that's how you get the 240 and the 120 over the years.
Four hours per pay period.
Ah, yeah, pay period.
Are you recommending?
I recommend we approve the changes to the sick leave policy and it be effective as of today. Making that a motion.
Okay, if that's all of the...
I'll do each one one by one.
Okay. First one is, um...
Sick leave.
Two point oh two, page one of two.
And I'm going to ask that when we do approve it, that we'll have the bottom of this policy, the date that it was approved by Commissioners Court. So we'll have that as the most accurate reflecting date.
Okay, and we've got a motion. Did we not? In a second. You make the motion, Jane.
No, Shelby did.
And that's to cover?
The sick leave.
Just the sick leave policy, the one page, which is two point oh two, page one of two. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, with the changes that are marked in gray on the one page, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of the motion and seconded, signified by raising your right hand. All opposed, same time. All vote for the motion carried.
Right, Commissioner and Judge, on page two of three, this is one of two, this marked on the Corinth County Policy on Holidays. You'll see a number four that is marked in gray, Holiday Schedule Workday. And we've changed this to, if a designated holiday falls on an eligible employee's scheduled workday, the employee will be allowed to take another day off the regular scheduled hours. Holiday time should be taken within one year from the end of the work cycle in which time was accrued or it was expired. You use it or lose it. Basically, what's been the process in the past, they've worked a holiday and then given another holiday, a day off, in addition to working the holiday. And the next agenda item, you'll see why we need to change this because Corinth County has had a policy of paying, or not a policy, I guess it's just been a customary thing they've done. They paid everybody for their holidays when they leave. And that's a lot of money that by a right, you don't think, you have to pay the holiday pay in excess of just what they work. So what we're doing is we're just, it's only mainly going to affect the sheriff's office and I think EMS and... That's many of those two. Those two departments. Because most of the time, the holidays, when they work, the employees are off, except for the ones that work the deal. So I'm asking that the court approve the changes to the holiday, policy on holiday number four. It's on page two of three, page one of two.
I'll move that we page that.
Second.
As recommended. And we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion and seconded indicates your, by raising your right hand. All opposed, same time. All vote for the motion carried.
Okay, Commissioners and Judge, on next section of this page, at the bottom, four point oh six, page one of two, Corinth County Policy on Overtime Compensation. We added that on number two. You'll see also highlighted in gray that overtime for EMS employees shall be handled according with the policy for overtime compensation established by EMS and approved by the Commissioners Court. And further down, maximum compensatory time. The maximum amount of unused compensatory time an employee shall be allowed to have at any one time is 40 hours. Payroll will provide monthly reports to supervisors and Commissioners Court to assist in scheduling and managing their time. This was put in there for the reason that, again, certain departments were... And we took care of the problem last month when we paid off a compensatory time that was accumulated over several years, several administrations of the sheriff's office and various departments that people had worked in. And, you know, they acquired a bunch of time. They had something in excess of $500. Well, when they get to 40 hours, and this 40 hours has been, it's something that a lot of counties are doing now. They're not, some counties are, we felt on a 40-hour week, it was fair. What happens was when they get to 40 hours, they'll let the supervisor say, "Hey, you've got 40 hours and you need to get it down." Or, "If you get anything over 40 hours, you may not get it." Or, "You'll get it, but there's going to be a time you're going to have to work that 40 hours down." And then on the back page, page four point oh six, it says, "The county shall have the right to require employees to use earned compensatory time at the convenience of the county." And I think the county will have the right to tell you, say, hey, like if Robert has some deputies and he can work into his schedule, say, hey, Shelby, you've got 40 hours, you've got, you know, you're fixing to get 40 something hours. You need to take your time now. We can afford you to go now. You can go home that day or whatever they want to express it. And then the record keeping on number 13, says, "Department head shall be responsible for the operation of timekeeping system that maintains the records of all compensatory time earned and used by each eligible county employee and heads or her department. Accrues for the balances can be viewed by employees in the timekeeping system and can be requested by, from the supervisor." I'm going to recommend these changes to the comp time. I think that'll save us some money in the years to come.
Robert, is this something y'all can live with?
Yes, sir. I think it's very fair. There may be an exception if we had something real major coming, going on and we had to exceed that, we would come to the court and ask for permission. But other than that, it should be okay.
Although we had discussed the reporting and its end here of the compensatory time accrued to Commissioners Court and supervisors, there'd also been the discussion of the sick leave that was on the books and all being reported also by category. Will that, since it's not specifically be stated, will that be included?
We can have it included.
We agreed for a monthly report to the court?
Show it off.
Of all?
Of all of them.
My second will include it.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. As the inclusion of every, every party to be in the motion is made. With that said, is there any further discussion? Court members, if not, all in favor of the motion signified by raising your right hand? All opposed, same time. All vote for the motion carried.
And I want to thank Mary for her input and a lot of the stuff that she helped us get through all this.
I think there was some discussion, Commissioner, about, I've been checking with TAC on some of the changes we made. Was that done?
Yes, I went and contacted Mary Ann.
She was...
And actually, I sent her exactly this and went over her, with her, what we discussed. And she was fine with it. In fact, she was going to make a point to kind of...
It was just a concern to make sure we had the form of certain two laws, SLA and that, so that's good.
Okay. We're down to twenty-one. So that was the compensatory time. Discuss, approve, disapprove, pay with earned holidays. I take it on record as a nine twenty-five fifteen. The approximate cost is $133,000 authored by Shelby, you mean?
Okay, this is another, when we changed the holiday time, this is one, the accrual. This is the reason why. If you look at the estimated holiday accruals as of September 25th, 2015, EMS has learned, employees have learned $7,919.44 and the sheriff's office has $121,069.72. The change that we made, hopefully, will take care of this issue ever recurring again.
And that $132,000, sorry for interrupting, is only for the wages. The associated fringe tacked on to that brings the total of this payout, if it's approved, $160,486.20.
And, sir, do you have any...
That includes Social Security, Medicare, retirement, unemployment, and workers' comp.
Where will that money come from?
If the payout is approved today, it will come out of this year's, current year's unexpended funds that could be from, we have several items that were not expended totally in this fiscal year. Kind of like we paid out the comp time last time out of the jail food budget. We would, we could pay this out of the capital outlay, software conversion budget for the offices that will take place next year that is not utilized in this year. I believe it's $1850,000 in the budget, which would amply cover this dispersal.
And this will pretty much clear the books, if you will, of anybody having the excess time. So when they leave the county, if they choose to leave, we won't have to write a check at a letter date for whatever hours that they may have. From now on though, they won't be, you shouldn't be seeing all these accumulated holidays.
Yeah.
If they're there, after, like they say, if July 4th is your first holiday, you got to July 4th of the following year to use it. If you don't take that day, you lost it. We're not going to pay you for it. And the policy we just put in place is basically says that we're not going to pay you for it in the books over one year.
If the court approves this payout, I would suggest, though, that every department turn any holiday pay that's been used within this pay period because this calculation was on the last pay period. Which there's, most probably, some of the sheriff's department might have used some.
But this is going to... But this will offset, this should not, this amount, these hours should not ever come back again like this with what we're doing today. But we're paying these employees what they've earned.
And the payout's being done before any increases in payout.
Yeah, before any increases, that's the only reason to do it. So I'll make that motion that we approve the...
Commissioner, can I, can I make a comment?
Sure.
I was not eligible for any of the comp time in my current job capacity, but I did work several holiday times and I'd like to be included in that position of money. I don't think I was, but I've accrued myself several holidays because I've worked it myself. So I'd like to y'all consider that. Should already include that, be in that.
Yes, sir. Have any thoughts?
I'll second that.
Is there, is there anybody else in the sheriff's department that would be eligible for the same kind of...
No, I'm the only one. All the other guys are, yes, but I'm not. I mean, I wouldn't include it in that, so...
Do you have any idea how many holidays it would encompass?
I do not.
I would like a bit of time sheets if he does clock in and out.
What did you, you had...
I was just going to say, I, I mean, I'm not asking for it, but I'm just saying, I have worked a lot of holidays. It just seems like they fall right along election times. And my election career has been here and I've been here on several holidays this year. But y'all, I mean, y'all got paid for it because y'all...
I suggest from now on though, to alleviate this question, if you turn in a daily time sheet then.
Well, I do clock in.
No, I know you do, but I think I'm talking to Karen.
I can.
Okay. Any other comments, anything? Have we done what we're going to do, obviously?
I have a motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Show your favor by raising your right hand. All opposed, same time. All vote for the motion carried. We're all... Any more? Twenty-two. Twenty-two. We're going behind on everything we've done. Discuss Act on Closing of the KCCO Prison Site, Chicken Account and Move the Balance of $1,462.23 to the Corinth County Interest and Sinking Account authored by Malone. I don't understand if you want to...
After a certain amount of time, that's the Corinth County Certificate of Obligations that was bought in 1992, I believe. And that's money that's been in there. After a certain amount of time, we're allowed to close that checking account out now. And Lawana informed me that we need to move it to the interest and sinking. It's been that dollar amount since I've been here. Because the time has elapsed for where we have to keep that account open.
Why do we have to keep it open?
After a certain amount of time, you have to keep it open for, I guess, with, because it was certificates of obligations, of audits, et cetera. Once that timeframe has been met, then we can move any remaining funds to the interest and sinking.
And what requires us to keep it open?
We had to keep it open for a certain amount of time.
Why do we have to? What words, little statute, that says that is what I'm really asking?
I don't have the statute, but it was kept open in case there were any additional expenses incurred as far as the issuance of the warrants when they were, or the certificates of obligation when they were issued, any auditing fees that would be required because of those certificates with that time period, and I believe it's five years after issuance, but I won't swear to it. But because we are not collecting any more monies on the certificates of obligation, in fact, they're almost paid off, then we will... Those monies aren't used for anything. They're just setting idle in an account. And so we'll roll them into the Interest and Sinking Fund for payment of current debt and future debt of the county.
You have a motion to act? Make a motion to act?
I'm not sure I really understand, but yeah, we'll take the motion if we do.
You mean, make the motion to act on closing of the KCCO prison site, general account and moving the balance of $1,462.23 to the Corinth County Interest and Sinking.
Second that motion. Okay, and there's no use made of those funds now?
No, sir.
How long has it been since we've written a check at it?
At least eight years.
Why has it sat there this long?
Because the time requirement hadn't been up yet.
Eight years was the time requirement?
I believe, Lawana said five years was the time requirement. So that time has, since then, been a...
Well, it seems dumb to me that we've left it there. But then probably, I don't understand. I don't know anything about money.
At various times throughout the period, those monies have been invested. So it's not that they have been setting totally idle.
And there's a total of $1,462.23, and I bet how much is earnings and how much is...
Probably $2.23. It's not a whole lot.
Of course not. Okay. All, all in favor of the motion? Is there mostly, is there a motion, yeah? In favor of the motion signified by raising your right hand? All opposed. I'm opposed to it because I don't understand it. I don't think it's, there's anything showing that it's correct. Okay, item 23, Discuss Act on Moving the Trooper Hotel Fund Money Balance of $24,906.6 back into the general fund. This county is no longer used authored by Malone.
When Judge Shaw was the judge, there was some concerns about DPS needing to be in the area more often. And so Marathon had donated $25,000. And so Marathon had donated $25,000 to help pay for the hotel expenses. We opened up a separate, it's in the same checking account, but it's a different fund within that checking account. And then when that money ran out, the county then funded another $25,000. And we paid one or two hotel bills off of that, but it's been, we paid none this fiscal year for that, those hotel bills. So we need to move it, we would like to move it back into the Fund 100 because that money cannot be used for anything other than specifically hotels built unless we move it back.
Judge, that's when the, they had this task force for commercial vehicles, the license and way troopers would come in here and bringing in maybe 10 to 13 troopers or more than that. And they would stay in the county for a week at a time. And this fund was initially established to help them offset some of their predeem costs, I think, to, to help, they would come back and we would, we were just trying to help offset the cost. Marathon initially dumped, started the fund with $25,000 and ended exhausted. And then at the next budget year, which I can't remember which year it was, but we, we added that back into the budget thinking that they would need that again. And now what they're doing is I think they're all just going back to their respective counties every day, they're trying to keep them within the county or two counties away so they don't have to have any overnight stuff.
So this is county money, it's not Marathon money?
Right, it's county money.
Yeah, all the Marathon money was spent.
Yeah. Okay. There's a motion and a second to...
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. To, to transfer that money back into the general fund, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor of the motion signify my raising her right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voting for. Okay, we're at the item 24, Discuss, Approve or Disapprove of County Treasurer's Report.
I've given everyone the new reports from December through August. I've met with Shelby and James and Pete, and any questions I had, I was, I answered them for them, so.
Is that correct? That's correct. James and I met with her after our last meeting we had, we sat in here, on the last Thursday?
Yes, sir.
Y'all then, the three of you, you meet together? Just James and I.
No, Pete, Pete came to my office separately.
Yeah, it was just me and Shelby that I was...
But James had made the suggestion that two of us meet together so we both would get the same responses or we don't, we had questions of each other we could ask. And Vi sat in here with us and explained her whole process and was that one number, the 5,000?
The 5233.
5233. And Pete, I guess she told you as well that the, the bank, the outstanding statement and the current deal, when you subtract the two together, the number should be the 5233. I don't, I can't remember that number. So we went back and looked at some of those and every one of them came back at that, at that number. So actually, the bank statements, in my opinion, with what I understood, are all balanced.
It's 5233, uh, 61.
That's correct. And James, you can maybe, that, for what you understood about...
We understood, I understood it all completely and these numbers match every time as we're going through them. Yeah, Vi gave us all the other additional, she's been giving us additional information. We've been punching it into her. Information she gave us.
I don't know if some of the commissioners may have a question on how some of the, if you want to see it listed outstanding checks every month or whatever there may be, so, you know, we kind of have another idea. But the, the bank statements that I saw, after she explained to me, I went back to check and they were all at that number. If they were above that number or below that number, then the bank statements are out of balance. If they were right at that number.
Every, every one.
Every one. No, I don't know. Some may say, well, maybe, maybe that's just a number that's thrown in there, I don't know. But to me, it does, the number comes out of the system. And, and I think they're all balanced.
So is that what you're talking about?
Yes, I, I, I'm gonna do this stuff with her. I'm not gonna tell you I understand everything, but I was satisfied that she had enough sufficient job. Great, but I can follow through from one month to the next and follow up.
I'll just clarify one thing. Number one, I haven't had time, obviously, with the budget. She gave me my copies last week. And number two, the only reconciliation you provided them has been 292, right? The general fund?
Yes.
Not all the other subsequent accounts.
Well, to have a complete report, we've gotta have the whole thing, do we not?
Well, that, that's why I requested them, so I can confirm that all numbers are reflected correctly.
But you haven't gotten the...
No, sir. The budget's kind of had me off the top.
I can imagine that.
No, no, what are the other?
The other ones are like with the interest and sinking, the Rode and Bridge special, all those other smaller accounts.
The payroll, the accounts payable, clearing account, those are your two bigger ones.
We need to see all of that and we need to have from the treasurer, a report on all of it.
There's 32 checking accounts and basically the majority of them were in and out.
I didn't make them and I didn't run for treasurer, but that's part of the job of the treasurer, is it not?
The, all the accounts that I was understanding that had some questions was the large 292 account that we called because that's half of the majority of the accounts in there.
Well, I have to say that I have questions about every account we have and that we're entitled to have a report on it all of the use of the money and what happened.
Right.
And that's your responsibility to report to us.
And with the three commissioners that I met with, they seem to be satisfied with the printed reports from the system. The only account that I gave them was the 292 account.
Well...
And anytime that they need to come in and see those checking accounts, they're welcome to...
We have a meeting twice a month that we need those reports from you to this court. You can shake your head, all you want to do.
I'll just shake my head, I'm just...
That's part of your job.
My job is to give a report of all the...
That's what you ran for and we want the report. All right. So do we need to approve the treasurer's reports on the 292 accounts only?
No, they're, because there's, it's all the...
I don't think we need to approve them for anything if we don't have.
The summary sheet that I gave you, Shelby, on this, the first page shows all the accounts other than the juvenile accounts. On the, the report on the top that says county funds, it gives you the beginning balance, the revenues, which is any monies that was coming in, the expenses on anything that was taken out, anything that has zero in it, obviously, there's no money in or out on it. Then it gives you that actual calculated in your balance.
I don't do this all the time, so I'm not sure, but may I ask you something, Karen? Okay, Vaughn, this number, we went through it a while, I know Pete had met with you first and then I could go to Ms. Shelby, we met with you and Ms. Shelby asked you a few questions. This number, 523361, if it ends up to say every month on the next one and then you show us how everything works and all that, then that means all the numbers match. Does that mean that every account, or what did you say? Was it given?
That is on checking account.
Can I answer the question? It's only on the 292 account, which has 13 separate funds in it.
Okay, the 292, this one here...
That's her general account.
Yes.
13 different funds.
Yes.
But all of 13 funds have to match for this number to come off the bottom number?
Correct. Anything that has a one in front of it, those, well, never mind, I've not looked at it. If it's, there's 13 counts of funds within the 292 account, that's our biggest one. That's one that has the most activity in it. So that's the one that is the hardest to reconcile and there was some differences in it. That's the one that the outside auditors spoke specifically about on that one. All the other ones, the Rode and Bridge special, the interest and sinking, railroad road, rural fire, permanent improvement, those, he did not have any questions on because those balanced to the bank, to the, the system.
Those are some of the other accounts?
Smaller accounts, yes.
But they're covered within the 292?
No. They're separate. They're separate.
Have we ever had a reconciliation of what the outside auditors did and what they showed and what was being shown to the court?
At the end of last fiscal year, when they completed that audit in August or September of 2014, they came back and we had to hire outside accountants to do the reconciliations because they couldn't get within immateriality to be able to issue their audit. And I thought at that time that they identified the 292 account, which is what Vi has provided the reconciliations on, the payroll account and the APCA account, which is the accounts payable account. I, I know there was discussion about the payroll, I'm pretty confident APCA was listed in there also. But those were, are our three biggest active accounts. And the payroll and the accounts payable account should be clearing. They should be, whatever bills we paid today, we transfer the money in there to cover them, so it should be zero except for outstanding checks. But those were the three that they had issues with. The smaller accounts are simpler because they're in and out, they're very minimal activity. But what Vi has presented y'all is just the 292 account. She has given me reconciliations on all the accounts, I think. I haven't had time to look at them all. So I would be able to look at those and confirm the numbers within the system, but she has not provided y'all with that, so y'all don't have confirmation of a reconciliation showing that the numbers in her report are what match with the bank. The only one y'all have are the 13 funds that are involved in the 292 account.
Which is not all we're supposed to be taking care of. We're supposed to be taking care of all of the money. We can't, we can't approve this if we don't have all the accounts.
Shelby? You, you first told us something that if we just, I got lost in the, in all the conversation. We would just pass the 292. It, it has some stuff that we haven't gotten under...
Right, because the, the form that you would have to sign stating, yes, that's what's in there, does not have, there's just the 292 on there. It has all the funds of the county on it. So I would have to go back and change that 38 million and take out all the other accounts that are in question.
But the numbers was in here?
Yes.
All the numbers are in there?
Yes.
Not questioning whether the figures are accurate or inaccurate. I think it would be wise to withhold action for one more meeting to allow Luana the opportunity to look at this because she has been tied up and has not been able to get to it. And I'm not questioning that it's not correct, I don't know. But I, I do believe it would be wise to allow her a little time to take a look at this and see if she sees any anomalies or anything like that.
The, the sheet that you have, the big sheet, the, that the judge in the court would have to sign or wherever it is?
This, yes, there's two.
Yeah, I don't have that with me.
Oh, it should be on the second page.
But that has a number that's generated from within the system?
Correct.
So whoever would pull that up, you pulled it up or Luana pulled it up or whoever else would have access to that number, that would always be the same number?
Correct. If you run the same accounts in that report, yes, which would be all the accounts from the, that the county has. I have two reports. One is the county fund, which the county is responsible for, and the other one is the juvenile fund, which is your juvenile.
The juvenile's not included in that.
The juvenile's not included in that.
That's what you expect, you know, it does.
I would, I would move we postpone action until the auditor has had an opportunity to review the things that have been discussed this morning and give us a, a report along with Mrs. Malone. Not questioning that that's not correct, but I think it would be, from a fiduciary standpoint, a wise move to give her a little time to look at it.
Well, I, I think we'd be terribly amiss if we did not do what you're asking to be done. We haven't had a report that justified approval of how much money there is since I've been on the court. And this is not it today, as far as I can tell. So I, I think we need to put it off and hope that in another month we perhaps...
Would that be sufficient time for you to look at it, Luana?
And in the meantime, if you would like to come into my office and look at these other checking accounts, I'm more than welcome to show them to you.
I'll, I'll come by and you can tell me what you sho, you show the others. I'm not questioning your figures.
Oh, at the time.
Don't misunderstand me, but I think it should be all dovetailed together.
That's true, that's what I was gonna ask, like, all these other, all these other accounts or something, you can have print off?
Yes.
Ready and stuff like that, where we can go out there and we can...
Yes, yes.
Well, let's have a meeting of the court and she could present it to the court and to the public and not be going over one at a time and hearing four or five different reports that we don't know if we all heard the same thing or not.
That's fine with me.
Well, we have these twice a month and we have a place on every one of them for a report from you that we haven't approved one. And do you remember how long?
December.
And the December one wasn't an approval of all of the reports?
Well, no, the last, I'm sorry, November. December is the first one for this one.
Okay. That was a year ago.
What do you want to read from this?
That's up to court. Um, they're, the accounts through August are done.
And October?
Next month, tomorrow.
Well, we, we have a schedule every month for reports from the treasurer. We have it scheduled.
Right, and I think you just mentioned that to have a separate meeting specifically just for the reports, or did I misunderstand what you mean?
Well, any way we can get it from you that's accurate is what I'm saying. And that's not what we've been doing.
Okay, well, I mean, anytime that you want to meet, sir, have a meeting.
Tomorrow would suit me, but that's, doesn't give enough notice to the public.
Correct.
We'll set one and you'll know when it is.
Okay.
Good. How about once she gets all the paperwork that we're asking for, what you want to mention that we're kind of asking for, if you want to, give us a call and that'll know when you get all that ready, then we can make a, a special meeting.
It's just a matter of pulling, actually, we'll just go to Luana's office and grab them, so all of the bank statements in it, just making copies, just making copies.
We haven't had a report like that since I've been on the court. And, and every one of y'all has been sitting here not hearing them, just like I have. I'm ready to hear one every month, every twice a month, in fact, is what we need. And I would like to have accurate ones up to date for every, every meeting. And we have not had.
Is the next month sufficient time? Why don't, why don't we look at this at the last meeting next month? Luana said that would give her sufficient time to do her due diligence and would give Vi time to put together what she needs to. Does that meet with everybody's approval?
And make sure at the first meeting in October that you get everything then and that gives you two weeks to, again, be good.
Let's see, this'll be the end of our fiscal year, is it not?
Today.
Luana, this meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item 25 on the agenda, which is the payment bill.
We will turn to page 12. I'll point out items of interest for items out of the ordinary. Midway down the page, you will see a payment totaling $30,910.46. That's the county's quarterly payment towards the appraisal district, towards their operational budget. At the bottom of that page, $9,199.01. That is for various court-appointed attorneys in district court. The next item is $6,583.90.
Wait, wait, let me ask you a question. Is there another item somewhere for court-appointed attorneys in county?
On the next page.
Okay, good. Okay.
Okay, the last item on that particular page, $6,583.09, is juvenile detention fees. On the top of page 13, the second entry, $1,600.00. That is for court-appointed attorney fees in county court. The next item, $800.00, is for court-appointed attorney fees in juvenile court. The large item on the page, $167,386.07, is payment on the EMS facility. Payment of $73,505.32 is payment on the jail facility. At the bottom of the page, the next to the last entry, which is coded jail food, $40,432.76. Obviously, we do not have that big an appetite. Included in that line item is $33,621.00 for the body cameras that were mandated by the state legislature. That is for all sheriffs, deputies, and the constables.
That's in the jail food?
Yes, the court approved the funding coming out of that lineup.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
You turn to page 14, the second entry, Prisma Care Medical, $8,650.08. These are for medical costs associated with inmates housed at GEO since September of 2014. We had some very delinquent billings received from GEO. You'll see a payment, and it's identified as conference expense of the sheriff's department, $3,718.48. This is for a mental health conference that is in October, and there will be four attendees from the sheriff's department. About two-thirds of the way down, we start with road and bridge expenditures. $93,255.61 is for road materials. $32,740.19 is for road signs. General engineering services, $30,047.10. Expenditures on Senate Bill 1747 projects, $120,220.42. The third item from the bottom is described as contractual road repairs out of Road Bridge Special. That is the 2015 Seal Code program. $520,502.63. The total of this bill cycle, $1,286,696.87.
The other part of that is list of construction, isn't it? They just about added that?
Other part of...
Of that 520,000? I didn't add them exactly, but they looked about to be the same. What, maybe Herb knows, how, how are we on our juvenile detention deal? Are we ever going to get them certified as adults, or where are we at?
I think we're trying right now to change it over and try them as juveniles.
So we presented it to the grand jury, and the grand jury now is in favor of leaving that out of juvenile system right now.
Okay.
So the courts are trying to negotiate on trial dates for the two adults and the other two juveniles, to answer your question. But the grand jury is the one that, the district attorney is handling the case, it's Herb. But the grand jury did find that there was probable cause and that the case could go forward. So, basically what that says is they have to be tried with the 40-year limit in the juvenile court, the two of them.
But you're still going to have the cost of the juvenile.
Yeah, I understand. If they didn't certify them, we're still hung out on that.
They didn't certify them, too, yeah.
Yes, it was based on the findings in the case, Commissioner.
Okay, um, let's see. I know this probably is a dumb question, and neither David or Mike are here, but general engineering services, is that part of the work that's being done on the, I thought these were road-specific, are they not? Am I missing something?
When they are specific to a project such as the Seal Code project, those engineering costs are identified as that Seal Code program. But when they are general county-wide engineering issues, they are expensed as general engineering.
Okay, well, I, I was going to say, because there's a fair substantial number of those, who, who did we autopsy?
A dead person.
If they, if it's an un, if it's an unwitnessed death, they had...
A dead person. Okay. I give up.
Yeah, we hope.
My question is, which dead person?
I, I do not know, sir.
I guess that was mine, and it wasn't stated.
If it's an unwitnessed death, it's automatic autopsy.
Move we approve the bills.
Any discussion? All in favor of motion approving the payment of the bill, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed same time, all voting for.
I'll get you one of these, Dave.
Well?
This is 1747, man. This is the, the bridge, Escondido. This is on County Route 211.
These were the ones, and how was this?
Eight to fifteen. And then this one here, the, the...
See, this is RZ Contracting. Oh, that's Chaplin.
Yeah, that's Chaplin.
Up here were the ones that I threw there.
Yeah, these are the roads.
Yeah, those I could see. Okay.
Which commissioner had them signed, this year? I can't tell any of them.
I think Judge, what happens, we usually will go one, two, three, and four, but David signed in the...
I think I signed in the wrong place.
He just signed above it right there. They really don't have a spacer, we just always just went kind of like one, two, three, four. Luana, on that stamp, it's approved on the commissioners, could we have maybe like a one, two, three, four, because everybody kind of signs?
You would have to ask Ms. Plurk here, because it's her stamp.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Plurk?
Can we have something standing to work? It has one, two, and three, four, so that doesn't happen again, where somebody signs, and then somebody signs on top of each other? Because historically, we just go, okay, one, two, three, four. But maybe we have a one, a two, a three, a four?
I found a blank and signed.
You're talking about this one, but...
Yes, I, I...
Somebody didn't.
I would do, whatever you think, whatever you think. You can simplify it and not look at it like that.
It would just be the expensive, or I can write it in every time. I don't think we should go to the expense of a new stamp. But I can, underneath, little, write in one, two, three, and four, and everybody just sign in their appropriate spot.
And then remind us to do it.
Is there a scoop for retarded court members? I'd be happy to be the first one to go and report back whether it's empty, whether you know right off.
I guess yes, there's more than one.
A good warning, being back.
I think I signed it.
He signed?
Look on the back page, see if I signed it.
Yes, it is signed.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make it there.
Second.
All in favor of signify by raising your right hand.
Amen.